Here.
Commissioner Paris, Commissioner Strickland, Commissioner May, Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry, Mayor Derek L. Henry.
Here.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Paris.
We have a motion and a second. No questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of October 1st, 2025 city commission meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six five zero. Now move on to our agenda approval. There any changes? Our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we're pulling item 6A, the Sescuintanio Ambassador Committee, from the agenda. We're adding to item 8X, City Manager's Office Merrill slash Zone Support Fund Distribution, 2,500 to TNR Helping Hands from the Zone Support Funds of Commissioner Jeanette Henry. We're adding 11D settlement to be made by the City of Daytona Beach to the City of Ormond Beach in connection to ongoing litigation for the project known as Avalon. That concludes the changes to the agenda.
You say 11D?
Yes.
11E, I think.
E, I'm sorry, E.
I'm going to accept the agenda with said changes.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Henry has arrived. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item number seven, which is our citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
John Nicholson, 413 North Camby Avenue, K, L, and V. K talks about Florida Power and Light Easement at Jackie Robinson Ballpark. When I looked at the backup material, it appears there are three light poles, electrical poles between Orange Avenue and the park. It appears that two of the three appear to be taken out, referring them to be underground. Why not the three of them? Because you're redoing that whole area and to leave that one pole on the corner of A1A, I mean, Orange Avenue, seems kind of awkward. So it appears it's saying that they're going to put two of them underground. I would ask that you might consider putting all three to keep an open vista, to make it as attractive building as possible. Demolition, I was told to, or asked to make a comment on that, being a historic building, et cetera. I don't see the damage. I understand because we didn't take care of it, the one corner, the plaster has come down. It is an historic building. Once it's down, it's down. I know you're going to vote for it. We have to stop ignoring our properties. Pam Woods asked us to put aside funding in each of our accounts for maintenance of our buildings. That was 15 years ago, 20 years ago. So I'm asking that this never, ever happen again. This is by design. Jim Chisholm wanted to get rid of the building. He's now gone, but so is the building. We have very little of our historic buildings left. I know there were three buildings in Midtown that they wanted to save and didn't because we didn't take the funds for it. I don't know how many more buildings we have that are from the 40s. There weren't many to begin with. Everything out by Daytona State College is gone. So I would ask that we no longer allow any of our buildings to get to this position. Thank you.
John, what are the three buildings in Midtown?
One was the Campbell.
Masonic Lodge?
There was a.
Masonic Lodge?
Masonic Lodge. And then there was a church that's coming down. We bought it and we're going to tear it down.
Oh, going to, okay.
Yeah.
Shiloh. Shiloh. And what was the first?
Campbell, the Masonic Lodge and Church.
What was Campbell?
Campbell Hotel. I'm told that's coming down.
So it's coming as well, okay. So one of the three that you named is already down. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy.
Good evening, Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I'm also here to talk about the Orange Avenue Recreation Center and its proposed demolition. It is a shame that we let things get to this point, but here we are. And what I'm especially disappointed by, beyond not saving that property, is that this demolition is coming to a vote before there's any plan on what will happen to that property following the demolition. We don't need another parking lot. We need something that respects the history of that property. The wacks need to be honored. They brought so much money to our struggling tourist town by their training program here. They were extremely important in World War II. Just watched a video today that explained that they did 391, 341 different jobs within the Army during that World War II period. They were critical from the motor pool to the parachute loading to just keeping, butchering for the troops. And we need to do something to recognize their effort. I have a couple suggestions that I would make as possibilities. One, if any of you have ever been to the Constitution Center in Philadelphia, they have a wonderful central area in which there are bronze statues of all the signers of the Constitution in various poses and situations. And people spend a lot of time in there, you know, posing with the, with the folks, learning where they were on the, on the Declaration, learning a little bit about what it is that they brought into the group. So it becomes a learning opportunity. We could copy that concept and bring some statues into that park. So it's not just a park, but it's a place for interactive activities that can, again, bring back the importance of those wacks. The other thing, an entirely different point of view, is that the play structure, a very big, multi-age play structure. Esplanade has very little for kids. There's a splash pad, a couple little slides, and big swings that, you know, defy the idea of, let's see how high we can go. We really need something that's a little more child-friendly down there. And many communities have done spectacular builds of wood play areas that involve, again, a lot of interactive activity. For instance, there can be a Jeep, and the whack can be working on the Jeep because they have a hammer that's attached to the structure. And so they have an opportunity to act out what's going on there. We need to be more creative and make people question why we've designed it that way and ask about the wacks going forward from there. A city that doesn't value its past, as I've said before.
I'm sorry, your time has expired. I don't know why it's not beeping.
Devalues their future. Let's do better.
Say that last statement again.
A city that doesn't value its past devalues its future.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment. You know, one of the things that this commission and a couple of commissions before us, because the mayor and I have been here for a while, actually value the properties that we have. We want to take care of what God has given us. And it's unfortunate that we're the ones that are sitting up here with the stuff that has become dilapidated, as my mama would say. Sandy, I totally agree with dedicating something to the wacks. You know, it's a very important historical fact that Daytona Beach was included in that. And we had an opportunity to see some renderings here lately in regards to what could be done. No decision has been made at this time. The demolition, I'm going to vote tonight, will take place. And we need to perhaps consider a committee of citizens who now give us some suggestions, like we had the ones who said what to do with the current structure. You know, look at what's been presented to us as possibilities for the structure once it's, once it's empty. But I think we're the ones who are going to stop the bleed on the properties that we own, on the things that we own. We're the ones that are going to say no more and are going to say we're going to take care of what we've been given the responsibility for.
Okay.
And that was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like discussion to pull 811 to discuss. Unless you, I can just.
Each one?
Eight what?
Eight eleven, what they were just talking about.
Eight L, you mean?
Eight L, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Two numbers.
So pull for discussion.
Regarding the rec center. Or, I mean, I'm ready to vote. I just have a few questions I would like to ask staff.
Or, whichever you prefer.
I'd rather just.
You can ask the questions now if you want.
Go ahead and ask the questions now.
I'd rather just ask the questions.
Yes, please.
Please do.
And who do I need to ask?
Go ahead, David Waller will come out, but go ahead.
In the contract, I am curious why we have airfare in there, meals, breakfast, $6 includes tips and tax, lunch, $9 include. I don't know if this is a standard contract. It just automatically is put in there, but it shouldn't be in there. These contractors are both local, and I'm not paying for meals for these contractors to do a demolition. So I would like it removed out of the contract.
Good evening, David Waller, Public Works Director. We've got, the, the contract is part of a continuing service contract. We'll review the finite details of it before we award the PO. What we're asking for tonight is a, is a, is a, is a project budget so that we can award the demo. The first thing we do is we'll, we'll award them that purchase order for the demo, but then they'll go and do the environmental survey for any asbestos lead and other materials.
Okay, I do have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have questions on that as well.
Commissioner, let me, let me address the questions that you asked Mr. Waller. You're looking at a form contract, and this is, this is the form that we send for out for all of our continuing services, for professional services. The continuing services contract doesn't authorize reimbursement for travel. It sets the rules up for when an individual purchase order may authorize reimbursement for travel. I can't conceive of a situation where a local consultant would request, and then we would grant in a purchase order reimbursement for local travel. This is really modeled for a consultant that's out of state.
We'll make sure to take a look at that.
Yeah.
The building department staff solicited some proposals for us because they work with them all the time to expedite the turnaround since we got asked to bring this back and set short notice. And that's what drove the project budget. It'll take several weeks to get the environmental survey information back.
And I understand that, but when we have residents reading this, I mean, and they know the local contractors, everybody knows who Sam Sula and all that is. So I think we need to.
They'll be here long before I.
Right, we need to upgrade our forms because it just doesn't look right.
It's the standard, as he said, is standard for anybody who does our business.
Okay, and then my next question. I actually wrote these down, sorry, when I was looking through this. Okay, so on DB, DBPR, I went on the chart to look, and I do not see where they are a consultant that can prepare asbestos survey, either contractor. So, I mean, it says, one says pending, so are they actually?
I'm not familiar with who DBPR is. Is that, is that the?
Daytona Beach Business, they regulate Daytona Beach Business, and they are not listed as.
Sam Sula?
Or Sam Sula.
Sam Sula is a demo vendor.
I understand that, to do asbestos survey. They are both not listed as licensed to do a survey because there's a difference between a contractor and doing asbestos survey.
They use a third-party person to do the survey work.
So it's going to be a third party?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They do, they do, as an independent person from the contractor will do the survey, and then they monitor their removal to ensure that they do it in a safe manner and following environmental regulations.
Okay, and then, because either contractor, that's what I said. And then the next question I had that I was looking at is, I'm not actually sure because, okay, since the amount of the asbestos removal is directly related to the cost of the demolition, why is the job being bid before the asbestos survey? It doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, can you explain that?
The way we typically do the demolitions is we, is we hire the contractor who's going to do the demolition, and then they go get the survey work done to, and then they, then they come back and provide a cost for its removal. Some buildings don't have any, and some, this one, we are confident will have asbestos in it just because of the age and likely the windows will be lead because of the age of the building as well. And if there is any sort of, you know, some mold products that may be in the building will require some remediation typically. It's just a wetting of the project during the demolition to keep it from being airborne.
Okay, so the contractor is going to have the, hired to have the asbestos survey done. So that price for that survey is going to be in the contract? I mean, so how do we know? You're going to have to come back and ask?
No, we've asked for a project budget not to exceed $100,000.
Not to exceed, okay.
And it'll all be within.
It'll be all within.
We anticipate it to be significantly lower than that. It's just a safe number to make sure that we have the authority to do what we need to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so of course, we have a motion and a second.
One sec, one sec.
For the consent agenda.
Oh, one sec, we're still on the park. So my concern is always on the record, is that when we expand our park footprint, well, if we have a park, given that we have a park, that if we expand that footprint, the security and safety in that park. So when we have open spaces like the one close to the library, prior, when we had the Riverfront Park that became the Esplanade, we had people in and out of the park, sleeping overnight, camping, et cetera. So I want to be sure that whatever we put there, that we can monitor it and that we can keep it safe for everybody to enjoy. I don't want to expand potential spots for bad activities to happen. Just to keep that in mind.
Well, for me, that's a given, and that was what I discussed the last time. And before I personally support this, I want to make certain that we get, you know, we continue with what we're doing down there. Any other questions or comments?
Was the rec center pulled?
No, no.
We can't pull it?
Well, we decided not to pull it because that's what we're talking about. That's what she was asking question. She got her questions asked. So if you have questions, go ahead and ask.
I don't have any questions. I just thought we should pull it.
Oh.
For discussion or pull it off?
Just pull it off for now. We vote on it by itself.
And?
Okay.
For what?
Commissioner does not want to vote for the consent item in its entirety. He wants that to be a separate vote.
And, and we typically do that no matter what the person's rationale is.
Thank you.
Let's just pull it off. Okay.
Okay.
So it's being moved on tonight's agenda?
Nice move, yeah, okay.
We'll take it immediately after the consent agenda.
Yeah, pulled into the normal part of the agenda. Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Uh, we don't.
We have to.
Well, I've been waiting on one for 20 minutes.
So we need a motion and say, accept that thing?
We don't have to say that.
We have to say that, okay. So I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion, got a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries six zero.
So we're going to discuss item 8L. And, let's see, so it is the Public Works Project Budget Demolition Environmental Remediation at Orange Avenue Rec Center. This is a resolution. A resolution approving a project budget of $100,000 for the demolition and environmental remediation services at the Orange Avenue Rec Center located at 108 Orange Avenue, authorizing the city manager to make procurement, procurement-related expenditures and approve work authorizations as necessary to complete the project up to the limits of the project budget, waiving certain purchasing code requirements to the extent of conflict here within and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Has it been 90 days since we last discussed this? When we, we said we'd, we'd, we'd let it rest for 90 days.
That was the Campbell Hotel.
No, we, we did that with the, with the, I could have swore we did that with us. We didn't?
No swear. It was Campbell.
Okay, I was wrong. I just admitted it publicly.
It's all right.
It'll be the last time.
For me either. Okay. No further, no, no public comment, no further comments? We have a motion and a second? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries five one.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number nine.
Oh, can I make a comment while you're moving on to nine?
Sure.
With these funds that you all are sharing, I just want to thank Commissioner Strickland for the $1,500 towards the senior prom. I can't tell you all enough how much that's going to assist. Remember, we are not only inviting all of our senior oasis groups from all of the centers, Schneble, Cherry, Dickinson, YSG, and, help me, Mason. The one on Madison and Mason.
Sunny Land.
Sunny Land. And so, you know, if that's your area, please consider supporting this because what we've decided this year is it's not just for the senior citizens that are attending our oasis. We have opened it up to all seniors that are 65 or older in the city of Daytona Beach. And our count, we've, we've capped the count because of what our facility can hold, to 400. And last year, we only did 200. So it is going to, it's going to be a greater number and a greater, you know, expense. So I would really appreciate if you all would consider assisting in some way. And then the other thing, you know, peace is coming up, and I'll talk about that later, but I want to also thank him for assisting with the Food for Peace. That's an open discussion with the community about police encounters. So thank you, Commissioner Strickland.
Okay. So item number nine is our public hearings and quasi-judicial hearings. Item 9A is a Growth Management Planning Department, Madison Oaks Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 4.98 plus or minus acres of property generally located south of Madison Avenue, north of North Street, and east of the terminus of Margaret Drive and, terminus of Margaret Drive from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Madison Oaks Restated Plan District Agreement to allow for the development of a 32-unit townhouse, townho, townhouse subdivision, authorizing the mayor and the city clerks to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. And the applicant has requested that this item be continued until the December 3rd, 2025 regular city commission meeting.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
We're going to move on to item 9B, which is City Auditor, Updated Audit Regulations. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the city code of ordinances in relation to the city auditor, creating sections 2-221 through 2-227 and section 30-59, establishing the city audit department, city auditor powers and duties, and additional regulations needed for the proper functioning of the city auditor and the city audit department, and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? No?
And I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, six zero.
We're going to move on to item 9C. It's our Growth Management Planning Department, Planning Division, on behalf of the Redevelopment Neighborhood Services. This is auditorium and theater standards, and this is an LDC Code text amendment, an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code relating to auditorium and theater uses, amending Article 5, Table 5.2.8.3, to add the auditorium or theater use to the RDD-1, Redevelopment Downtown Beach Street Retail, and RDD-2, Redevelopment Downtown Central Business District, adding section 5.2. B.21. K. to establish general standards for the auditorium or theater use, amending section 11.5 to modify existing definitions for the terms auditorium or theater and nightclub to create a new definition for the term live entertainment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion?
So moved.
All right, we have a second.
And I do have one speaker, Mr. Mayor. Is it Kristi Barrett?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kristi Barrett, 37 points at Elaine, Palm Coast, Florida. Thank you for having me. I am the owner of Kristi B. Comedy Club. Excited and hoping to bring a locally-owned comedy club to Beach Street right here in Daytona Beach, where we'll be showcasing nationally touring comedians, cruise ship comedians, celebrities, local talent, while supporting nearby restaurants, hotels, and tourism. We also look forward to hosting many comedy fundraising events to help give back to our community and proving why Daytona Beach is considered the world's most famous beach. I do want to thank you all for your time in helping a small business get started and the guidance I've received from the city. And if approved, we look forward to laughing with all of you this year.
Thank you, I love that last line.
Thank you.
What are your hours? What are your hours?
We'll be open Wednesday through Sunday, doing a Sunday brunch show. I, I don't know yet the timeframes, but we will be doing one show on Wednesday, one on Thursday, two shows on Fridays, and two shows on Saturdays. Probably, I, I had a club in Palm Coast. We did a 6:30 show because Palm Coast is a very sleepy town, and the 9 o'clock show was not very supportive. Everyone wanted to be in bed by 9:00. So we did 6:30 and 8:30 in Palm Coast. So we will see, maybe Daytona stays up a little bit later.
And is it by reservation?
It will be ticket sales. We will also accept walk-ins. So we do like to get the tickets sold online. We do a lot of group rates, do a lot of different activities. People that want to bring their office staff out for a private event and comedy show where they can have food catered in and enjoy the show and laugh together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Kristi, you said they can cater food in?
They could have, they could, like, if they wanted to have a private event, someone treating their staff for something like that, for a private event, they could have food catered in.
So Sunday, you supply a bunch? Do you supply any food during the other time?
So we're working on that, having like just charcuterie, you know, boxes or snacks or something like that, so.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, I'm very excited. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 10. This is our introduction of ordinances. 10A is a Growth Management Plan, Growth Management Planning Department, Preliminary and Final Plats Process, Land Development Code text amendment. This is an introduction and an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code relating to plat processes, amending Articles 2, 3, 7, 11, and Appendix A to implement SB 784 and comply with requirements of the Florida statutes, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. Are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? The public hearing is set for November 19th. Moving on to item 10B, it's the Finance Department, Issuance of Capital Improvement Loans, Series 2025A and 2025B. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, authorizing the borrowing of money and the issuance of debt in an amount not to exceed $35,500,000 for the purpose of providing financing for certain capital improvements and improvements related to the second phase of construction at the Jackie Robinson Ballpark Stadium, and providing an effective date. And are there questions or comments from the commission on this item? The public hearing is set for November 19th. So we're going to move on to item number 11. Is our administrative items. Item 11A is a Growth. Is our administrative items. Item 11A is a Growth Management Planning Department. This is Madison Cove Historic Tree Removal. This is a resolution. A resolution authorizing removal of a historic live oak tree on the property located at 10 Allison Lane to allow for the development of an affordable senior housing multifamily project known as Madison Cove, subject to conditions, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak on this?
Sure.
Okay. So we, this is something that we talked about in our last, not the last one, the one before that. It's the big oak tree that's over in, where is, they're asking for Madison Cove. And I went to the area, I visited it, and the neighbors and the residents have a grave concern and they have a right to be concerned. I've seen the pictures of this place and it's, of their homes, and their homes are already flooding before we even cut down this oak tree. And I think that in order for us to do safe, responsible, and smart development and growth, we need to really be serious and really be looking at cutting down oak trees in the middle of neighborhoods that's absorbing water that's already flooding. An oak tree up to that size holds about 100 gallons of water per day. And so, I'm not gonna support this project at all. I'm just saying pretty much upfront. It's, this project is not going to be beneficial to the surrounding community because of the flooding. And I implore each and every one of you to go out and look. I don't know if you all had a chance to go out and look, but look at the homes and look at where the potential property is going to be and how that water is going to swoop down onto those homes, homes that are already flooding. And so, I don't think it's smart. I don't think it's responsible for us to be cutting down a tree a 36-inch.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant.
What are you saying?
I don't think this is the same location.
It isn't? That's not Madison Cove?
Well, it's Madison Cove, Madison Oaks, I think is the one.
Madison Oaks?
Do Madisons tonight.
Okay, alright.
That one was moved.
This is the one, this is off of Beach Street area.
Beach Street and Madison Lane. It's the senior affordable housing project that the city has committed to supporting through the government funding.
Alright, so the other one is the, okay, I got the Madisons confused.
No worries at all.
Okay.
It happened to us in the preps, so it's okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So we were on the same page. Don't worry.
Thank you. Thank you.
But we will, just to explain, because I think it's important if we're looking at removal of any historic tree, to kind of explain what we're facing on this site. So this site is on Beach Street and Madison Lane. It's for the 55 and up senior affordable housing projects. The commission's familiar with it. You've seen it a few years in a row. And you guys have supported it through the local government grant program. What they are working on now is there is another tier. Florida Housing Finance creates all these tiers for who gets priority for the tax credit funding. Getting the local government contribution loan puts you in an elevated tier. And then being permit ready, so having an approved site plan and building permits puts you in the most competitive tier. And so in order to do that, I think that deadline is mid-November. We are deep in site plan review with city planning staff. We have building permits under review. We have worked with the city to avoid the historic trees on site. We have five. There are four that are being preserved. The one being requested for removal is directly dead center in the site where the drive aisle has to go. We did work with city staff to get an administrative adjustment to the building setback on one side to save one of the others on the site. You can see we kind of, if you have a site plan in the backup, we've built around the parking area to save one of the other trees, but this one is just right in the center. It can't be avoided. And so we will mitigate that as required in the city's code. I think at the end of the day, we're asking for the removal of one live oak. This is a live oak, and we will plant 28 additional live oaks on the site as part of the current landscape plan. So we do understand that we would like to never have to take down historic trees. This one is just right there in the middle of the site. It's right at the threshold for the inches that qualify it as historic. And we are making this request to allow for the affordable housing project to move forward. And I'm here for questions.
Well, I think you answered most of mine. So there are five and you're asking only take down one, and you're going to plant 28 others? Okay, because it's a very wooded area. That corner's been very, so okay. I'm not supporting the other Madison.
Thank you.
Alright.
And I don't have a motion yet.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second? No additional questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? We'll take that as a six zero, uh, vote.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item 11B. It's the Public Works Approving a Project Budget for Road Resurfacing Program for Fiscal Year 25-26. This is a resolution. A resolution approving a project budget for a citywide road resurfacing and restoration program at a cost not to exceed $4,887,202.4, authorizing the city manager to make procurement-related expenditures and approve work authorizations as necessary to complete the project, waiving certain purchasing code requirements to extend, to the extent of conflict here within and providing an effective date.
So move.
Uh, we have a motion and a second?
And I have no speakers on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign? This motion carries six zero.
We're gonna move on to item 11C. It's the Utilities Department Charmuse Lime and Stone. This is a resolution. A resolution accepting the bid of Charmuse Lime and Stone Inc. for the purchase of as-needed high-calcium quick lime on a unit price basis at Brennan Water Treatment Plant at a unit price of .265 per pound for a one-year term, with the option to renew for two one-year terms, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the contract, authorizing the city manager to expend up to $2,486,960 for purchases of quick lime in fiscal year 26, authorizing the city manager to exercise the city's options to renew and expend such sums that as are needed for contract services in future fiscal years, subject to budgeting and appropriation, authorizing the return of bid security for all unsuccessful bidders, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Alright, we have a motion and a second?
And I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. You have any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign? Motion carries six zero.
We're gonna move on to item 11D. It's the Utilities Department, Dannis Utilities Lift Station Number 7. This is a resolution. A resolution accepting the bid of Dannis Utilities, Inc. for a replacement of lift station number 7 located at 625 South Keach Street at a cost of $1,87,495, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the contract, authorizing the return of bid security of all unsuccessful bidders, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Uh, we have a motion and a second?
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
No speakers. Alright. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're gonna move on to 11E, which was added to tonight's agenda. This is a resolution authorizing an offer of settlement to be made by the City of Daytona Beach to the City of Ormond Beach in connection with ongoing litigation between the cities and the developer of the project known as Avalon Park, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second? Do we have any speakers?
Does anyone want to speak on this? Mr. John Nicholson?
John Nicholson, 413 North Grand Avenue. Can the public have a right to know what exactly? You all discussed it for like an hour and a half or so. We have no idea of the fact that there is an agreement. We know that the City of Ormond is not happy with the city of Daytona Beach, with the traffic that's going to be coming onto Granada. We know they're not happy with providing the water. They're saying that they can't afford to enlarge their. So what is exactly, are you agreeing to? And what is the settlement? What was the argument? What was the settlement, please?
Mayor and members of the city commission, we do need to provide you a little bit of an overview in terms of background. Our litigation counsel in this case, Segundo Fernandez and Tim Atkinson, are, are I think in attendance and available remotely if you have any questions. And what we're talking about are two of four agreements that Ormond Beach and Daytona Beach entered into in 2006 to resolve some prior disputes regarding water and sewer service along their common boundaries. These two particular agreements did two things. One, they set Ormond Beach's service boundary west of I-95, well south of Daytona Beach's city limits. While we don't have a map, what, most of the property within our jurisdictional boundaries, west of I-95 and north of Margaritaville, is within Ormond Beach's service boundary under, under these agreements, meaning Ormond has the right to serve. The, the second agreement that's into more particulars about Ormond's right to serve, it provides that Ormond Beach would, would have the ability to provide wholesale service to Daytona Beach for any of those properties. Ormond Beach would have the right to impose charges on Daytona Beach to extend Ormond's system to some extent, as well as charge impact fees. Okay, my mic is on. Sorry about that. But Ormond could charge impact fees on Daytona Beach for providing service. Thank you, Mr. Fiecher. Charge some of the costs of extending their service lines to Daytona Beach, and then charge Daytona Beach a recurring wholesale service charge for providing service. Daytona Beach would be the retail service provider and bill the customers directly. Avalon's filed suit against both Daytona Beach and Ormond Beach under these agreements because Avalon's been trying for several years, as, as the complaint reads, to finish designing their utility system in a way that would connect to Ormond's system. And they can't do that, they allege, because Ormond's been refusing to give Avalon sufficient information to design the system. Avalon's included Daytona Beach in the lawsuit in part because we're a party to that contract that gives Ormond the right to serve, and also because the property is within our jurisdictional boundaries. We've cross-claimed against, against Ormond Beach, asking the court to abrogate those two agreements because we don't believe that those agreements are the best agreements for Daytona Beach or for the residents who would live there. Part of the reason is that under those agreements, if Ormond is unwilling or unable to serve, Daytona Beach has the right to serve. But if at any point after that, Ormond indicates that it is ready to serve, they can serve and then require Daytona Beach to pay the cost of retrofitting the system in, in the ground to connect to Ormond's system. We believe that the cost of, of, to Daytona Beach of, of abiding by those agreements could be exorbitant and duplicative, and that it might be appropriate, and this was the suggestion of our litigation counsel, to extend an offer to settle to Ormond Beach to buy out their rights under those agreements. The amount proposed is $2.3 million, which is far less than the city's cost should the agreements remain in place. And the city's required, Daytona Beach was required to fund some of Ormond's costs to provide service.
Alright, do we have any additional questions?
And, and I just want to ask Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Atkinson, who are on the line, if they have anything to add.
Well, basically, there were some very, very ill-advised agreements entered into in 2006. Those agreements now are coming back to bite us in the sense that if the agreements are, are not abrogated, Daytona is exposed to billions and millions of dollars of liability. And it is our advice and we need to get rid of those agreements. And that's why we have a settlement offer that we would like the commission to approve.
Alright, do we have any additional questions for any of our legal advisors? Okay. Alright.
And Mayor, I think it would be appropriate to ask if there's any additional comments since when the question was originally raised, the public hadn't heard the gist of, of the item. So you should ask that before the vote.
Yeah. Any other public comment? No other public comment? Okay.
John already spoke on this item.
He already spoke.
I, I think that Mr. Nicholson should be given the right to speak again since he didn't really know anything about the agreement.
Absolutely, because the residents are not here, don't even know about this item.
Again.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grand Avenue. From what I understand, because I couldn't hear you. From what I understand, what you're saying is, because of our agreements in the past, we're gonna, from what I understand, I think he's saying is we're gonna abrogate that at a cost of $2.2 million. And then all of that would be cleared, and then we would provide the water in the sewer. And everything would be done, it would be a wash at that point. We would go from starting from ground one. It would be us and Avalon Park and Ormond would be out for $2.2 million.
$2.3.
$2.3 million. Okay, thank you.
Avalon, okay. That wasn't explained, it's $2.3 and plus, he said Avalon would be out.
I think he meant Ormond Beach would be out.
Ormond Beach, okay.
Yeah.
But that's if Ormond Beach accepts the offer.
That's right.
Alright. Do we have any other questions or comments? Alright, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries, uh,
Four two.
Four two.
That was our last agenda item.
Alright, we started tonight, I believe, what was Commissioner Reed? What was it? Paris? Who was it? Okay. Commissioner Reed.
Alright. Um, I mentioned peace earlier. We have our flyers out for peace. You can see the partnership here with the City of Daytona Beach, the Daytona Beach Chapter, The Links Incorporated, the NAACP. And I want to also thank the mayor, as well as Commissioner Henry, for your contributions on those little pouches that we'll be giving the youth to put on their windows, to put their IDs and their, their registrations so that they don't have to reach for anything and it be perceived that they were doing something else. This program is a panel discussion, from encounter to outcome, how decisions shape your future. It's an in-depth discussion on police encounters and navigating the legal system. Our police chief, Jakara Young, Sergeant James Mayer, retired Judge Don Fields, retired Judge Hubert Grimes, moderated by Dr. Chester Wilson. Next Thursday, the 13th of November, on the campus of Bethune-Cookman. The reception begins at 5:30 with light refreshments. The program starts at 6:00. And I want every child program parent, anybody that wants to know what it's like through the legal system, to please come and listen to this discussion. Alright, it's open to our community. Oh, I want to recognize, where's my little monthly thing? Little mayor, little manager. I'm coming.
Little manager.
Sorry, Mr. Fiecher. Somebody got their manager thing? Thank you. I want to recognize and congratulate my high school of Seabreeze High for having been named a Florida School of Excellence. They are in the top 20% statewide for performance for sustained academic achievement. The only high school in Volusia County to earn this honor for the 24-25 school year. Seabreeze is recognized for outstanding student performance, continuous improvement, and granted flexibility to continue innovative practices. We want to congratulate the students, the teachers, staff, and leaders for this well-deserved achievement. Yes, sir.
Almost top 20.
Thank you for the applause.
Yes, great job.
Also, I want to just recognize the, the Bethune-Cookman men's basketball team. Do you all know we almost beat Auburn the other night? It went into overtime. Overtime in Auburn on their court. Hell Wildcats. Alright, alright. On Sunday, the mayor and myself and his two kids went to the Highlands Area Picnic. They had their annual picnic. They'll be having a yard sale on the 22nd. It's open to the city to come out and either participate or to purchase some items. It's open to the city to come out and either participate or to purchase some items. Did you all know that we're losing Justin? I just want to thank him for all the service he's provided us through the communications department. Our Justin is leaving us. He's actually becoming his own political, oh, what is it? PIO, Public Information Officer. And when he came here, he was so green, Susan said he was neon green. But he has really served us well. He doesn't mind coming to our events all time of day and night. I had him in a male fashion show. That's just how willing he is to assist us. All right? And I guess that's all I have. Oh, don't forget, this Sunday, we still have our Midtown Sundays, where you can come out and play games at Daisy Stockton Park. There are food vendors, there's a DJ, and board games are taking place from 3:00 to 8:00 on Second Sundays. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, redevelopment, this goes through maybe December? Because this is November. Okay, Phoebe says yes. So one more Second Sunday, which will be December, at Daisy Stockton Parks. And our theme for the senior oasis, in case you didn't know, is Daytona Nights. They're supposed to wear their little flapper dresses and everything. You know, our seniors really get excited about this. And I can't reiterate again that we're inviting 400 citizens, so we would appreciate any assistance that my colleagues would like to share in regards to that.
I feel like you're talking to me, but I think that I did contribute money.
No, if you know you did, don't feel guilty.
I was nervous for a minute.
No, I think you gave me $500, didn't you?
Yeah, I think I was nervous.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to get more, if you're feeling nervous, we'll take it. But I think that's kind of all that we've got going on. But I do want to say something in regards to this. You know, when we brought our Christmas parade back, we really didn't think about how it would affect others. I'm not going to ask us to consider this year, because all of our dates are already set. But, you know, we got a letter from Seabreeze saying they really thanked us for what we did, and how the president came, the president, principal, because you see where I work, at a university president. The principal came and spoke with us and what have you, and they really wanted to participate in our parade. However, it's the same day as Holly Hills Parade, and they've been in Holly Hills Parade for over 27 years. Yes, Orman Beach's Parade.
Bethune-Cookman?
Seabreeze. They've been in Orman Beach's Parade for over 27 years, and they just want to respect that they've been doing that. And on that day, Holly Hill does it in the day, they go there in the day, and then they do Orman's at night. So when we look at this parade for next year, some of the things that have been spoken of, Holly Hill or Orman wants us to alternate parades, because our kids from Daytona go to school in Orman, and kids in Orman come to Daytona. So maybe we could alternate years, or even perhaps have ours earlier. I know, I think we try to wait till the basketball season's over to honor our athletes or whatever, but let's take them under consideration, because our kids go to school there, and they need to be in their own parade in Daytona as well.
Commissioner Reed, I agree with you, because actually, a lot of my veteran groups, they go down to Orman, too.
Instead of, mhm. So let's think about that for next year.
We just have to work on that, because it's happened more than once.
Exactly.
And we just have to work on it. And I agreed, I spoke with the principal as well, and told him that we would try to make certain that that didn't happen in the future, or minimize it, because we want to be supportive, we're all neighboring communities, and we don't want to be in competition.
Exactly.
We want to be able to enable all of the students to be able to participate in all of the varying activities.
And it's my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that Holly Hill is even asking us, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, but they're asking that we join their parade and have it from Holly Hill to Daytona, and have just a nice, long parade coming between the two cities. So we've got some things to consider that will really take it to the next level and have more people and more parts in our parade than we've normally had.
I like that.
Mhm, I think that'd be pretty cool, too. But as you stated, it's something that we'll consider in the next year's programming.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration, and thank you all for allowing me to express my comments on behalf of Zone 6.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Strick?
Let me start with this. A-1A, I think the FDOT has finally stumbled upon a good solution for over there. Street looks good, it's getting rewidened, and I think once they get it paved, it'll be much better than what it was. They've taken out the chicanes and several other things, and have improved that street. Just an opinion from Commissioner Strickland in Zone 2. Soon, well, within a few months, probably, we will be vacating Firehouse Number 1 on Beach Street. All of you people that are interested in the history of this town and us not tearing stuff down, go ahead and start thinking and planning as to what you can do to save that building. It's an old building, it's a nice, unique building, maybe we can do something to save it if we start trying to go forward and make a plan. Another question for the attorney over there. He's listening, I think. We rotate the vice mayor position every so many months between everybody. What's the rules on the TPO and the tourist committee that we have people on? Are those in perpetuity? Or could those be put in a rotation? Do you all have an answer?
Well, I'd have to confirm by looking at the inter-local agreements that provide for the city's participation in those agreements, but my recollection is that they don't have any particular rules on their side of things, as far as who represents the city. It would be totally a decision for this commission, but I can confirm that.
I would like to see those start to rotate, instead of being in perpetuity. Looks like that's about it. For me, I will make one comment that I think Tallahassee needs to mind their own business. And no, I know they're not. They should be representing us, not trying to ridicule us, make us look bad, make accusations they have no proof of, and I am just absolutely disgusted with our representation up there. And now I'm on record saying that, and they'll be after me, but bring it.
All right. Commissioner May? I agree though.
Okay, it feels like it's been a busy three weeks. It seems like it's been really, really long, doing a lot of things. So I'm just wondering if Mr. Andy Holmes is there, so he could give us an update on the, is he here? No, okay. So I went to, I substituted for Commissioner Cantu at one of the meetings at the TPO, and what happened was, one of the big concerns were e-bikes. What I brought to their attention was that we have some businesses here that actually, you know, they do quite well with our tourism, but they were looking at their regulators and just the speed at which the e-bikes were going, so looking at some legislation to kind of toughen that up a little bit, just for safety. So I like that one of their key concerns is safety. I like that. Also, they gave an update on some of the projects coming here, and Mr. Holmes has them, but we are doing some work, I believe, on Clyde Mars as well, so our projects are in fact moving forward. So thank you, Commissioner Cantu, for pushing all those forward. I went, later that day, I went to a flood mitigation meeting at the airport, and I will tell you that every single city right now is actively involved in flood mitigation. They're all working very, very hard at improving their infrastructure, improving their roads, working with their people, providing information. One of the most innovative, I'll tell you what I liked about it. You could hear every other city speak about what they were doing, and compare yourself and say, oh, that sounds like a good idea. And for all the things that they're doing, we are working very, very hard at our own cities. So please believe that we're actually moving forward compared to other cities, and just listening to what they're doing. We are doing a fantastic job on all fronts. I like learning that Transport 386 was actively involved in Daytona Beach, and that they're actually purchasing properties and helping the community to kind of rebuild after our various flood events. The thing that I found most interesting about that particular event was they have a video system, a TV system, one of the cities, where you can go online and you can actually see the work that's actively being done for flood mitigation. So it's not just we're telling you, they take video footage and they advertise it. And I thought that was a really nice touch, it's kind of like you have to see it to believe it. So moving on from there. We had our Halifax Art Festival past weekend, really well attended. We had some little bit of weather go on, but really good. One of the key thoughts that came out of that from Merchant today at my kind of safety meeting, was that morning times, there were some people wandering, and it made the area look unsafe, given that we had so many visitors down there, it was not a good look. So it's a little bit of a safety concern, even though we had people down there, it was still a little bit of a concern for us. So I want to just go, want to scroll through you, I've got some other things that have happened. The DDA, let me start here first. I met with a gentleman, you may know about him, his name's Kevin Myers, I'm not sure if you know him. He started an academy 16 years ago called Rain Academy, and he services students from K through 12. They have small classrooms, about 90 students total. Right now, they're housed in Orman Beach, but they service predominantly students from Daytona Beach. And the way the students get there for the academy is they pick them up and bus them there. They take them there to school every day. And so right now, they are looking for a home in Daytona Beach. They would like to come back to the Daytona Beach area. My question is, do you have any buildings or spots in your zones that you know of that might be a good fit? They would need approximately, they're going to grow into it, right? So right now, they need about six or seven classrooms with some meeting space, but if you know of any facilities that they could rent, or even partner with, it would be great, because those are 90 students from our area. So what they also do is, their goal is entrepreneurship. They also have, they launched a program called the Stars After School Program, they do a lot of STEM work, they deal very much with the families, they have a school outside-of-school mentorship program. They even help with offering free temporary housing for some people displaced in their school system. So they're deeply committed, I'll read a little bit about here. They are, they offer over a decade of volunteer service to the Florida East Coast Super Sonic AAU Track Club. They help youth with athletics. Every holiday season, they're involved with Thanksgiving meals and Christmas gifts for about 50 families. They do monthly drives as well. They also work with Hope Place, Miracle Center, Bethune-Cookman College, and the American Cancer Society. So they have quite a bit of reach. So a final line is this, in every initiative, Rain Academy lives out its values of compassion, integrity, innovation, diligence, excellence, and resilience, by blending academic rigor with community service and entrepreneurial vision. I really like the entrepreneurial part, because they're starting the business concept from a very, very young age. But I want you to know that they are a known entity. They have been around for 16 years. And again, the classrooms are small. So I just want to read this. They offer children in grades K through 12, hands-on approach to learning, small classroom settings. The teachers offer individualized, tailored education to each person's strengths and goals. Rather than treating education as a one-size-fits-all, the academy prioritizes creativity, critical thinking, and, again, entrepreneurial skills. So this is something that I hope you can help with in your various zones, if you know of an organization that has extra space. But this is an actual school, they start at 8:00, they finish in the afternoon time, so someplace that can keep them there. I'd like to keep them, I'd like to get them back in Daytona Beach. But I think that if more people knew about them, they would most likely send their kids as well. But look them up, Rain Academy. Then, DDA meeting. So again, the DDA meeting, we had Downtown Development Authority, we dealt a lot with our upcoming events. So just so you know, the DDA is doing really well, so those are our downtown event schedule. And let me tell you what we have coming up. So this past month, in October, we had our Downtown Daytona Nights, then we had our wine, it's called a Wine and Treat Walk. We had 285 attendees. So I want you to imagine this, we have, think of all the events downtown, and all the people downtown. They have to feel safe when they're down here, and if we have that police presence down there, I think it'll go a long way. November 7th, Daytona Nights with food trucks art walk. November 8th, the Fall Wine Walk, that's coming up. November 22nd, Sunset Concert, which we've supported, featuring the yacht rock and some friends there, it's going to be very pleasant that evening. But they have a really nice little card, and the card, you can pick it up here in the City Hall, I hope, it's made by El Smith Productions, and he helps us out a lot. We have events throughout, throughout November, December, January, February, double events at some times, or three times the events. So we're doing our part to bring people down here. The Esplanade does their part, because some of our events partner with them. And as I said previously, we had about 996,000 people come through the Esplanade. So you combine that with our ongoing events, which are two or three a month, we have well over a million people going through our downtown area. So safety becomes huge, we have our apartments coming as well, and I like seeing the development that's taking place on the corner of Main and Beach Street there, Fairview area. So moving right along, I went ahead and I visited Dr. Fuqua's church, called Word Praise Family Church. I went there last night. If you haven't been there, I know Commissioner Reed has been there, it will take your breath away. I mean, what, what an investment, and what a blessing for them, right? Definitely an asset to the community, and I would very much like to see us be able to help them with some of their innovative programming. They have a community kitchen, they have a great gymnasium, they are doing, wow, you're right? You okay? Sorry. They are, they have, I walked into a cheerleading, kind of a cheerleading Pop Warner practice going on, and I was really surprised, I was very much surprised. What did you think, Commissioner Reed?
Well, I was, you know, sitting here listening to you, I was going to say, I don't know what all they're doing with TURITI. I know, I know you probably don't know either, I'm just looking at you, because you said, is there something in our zones?
For Rain Academy, you mean Rain Academy?
Right.
Uh-huh, right.
Back to Rain Academy. But with what you just said, and with the Fuquas came in here and said they need that $300,000,000, they may want to host Rain and have a tenant to offset those costs, because there was a school, this was a church that had a school attached to it. That might be our answer for Rain.
Mhm.
Okay?
Yeah, I like it.
That's Daytona.
I like it. So, yeah, I think that Daytona Beach, we have so many little hidden gems, and, you know, I applaud all of us for, you know, we can't all be in our zones all the time. So I mean, this is in a completely different zone, right? So we each, we are kind of charged, not just to take care of our zone, but if we see something, we try to help each other out. So if you can help me out, I would appreciate it, take a look at your zones, and if you have space that would accommodate this, I would really appreciate you letting me know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Cantu?
Yes, I have a few things. One, Mr. Strickland, you can actually show up at those TPO meetings, they are advertised, and it's not something, the TPO, that you get something done right away, it's a long-range transportation, and some elected officials don't understand, they're planning for the next 25 years or so. But they are open to the public to show up, and some elected, there's...
Okay, all right, let's let her go.
I was just trying to be nice, to explain what the TPO is. And I do want to say thank you to Commissioner May for filling in for me, and also for the Storm Mitigation Board as well, that I fill in for the mayor sometimes. Okay, so I have a few things. The Marina contract, so that contract was put in place, I believe, in 2020, and it's actually up for renewal. Well, I started looking into this contract, and I'm a little concerned about the contract, because nowhere in the contract states that a contractor's employee would have P-cards, in which if people don't know what P-cards are, they are actually city credit cards, and some of these contractor employees, there are limits, I mean, it was from $3,000 to $25,000 daily. And it kind of concerned me, because I was looking at one individual, there's been 14 contractors' employees that's had P-cards, two are active right now. But some of the expenditures kind of concerned me. There was one where, she's not a city employee, and I even verified with HR, all of them, and it kind of concerned me that she went to Fort Lauderdale for a training, and stayed in a motel, and we paid $1,200 for. Why are we paying for contractors' employees' training? And this stuff doesn't make sense. Why were we paying her cellphone bill, $144 a month, when we actually, the city has bulk accounts, you know, a bulk account with AT&amp;T, because we all have AT&amp;T. So it kind of concerns me, because, and I started looking... So it kind of concerns me, because, and I started looking up the policies, and I've checked the contract, nowhere in this contract that we approved states that the contractors' employees get credit cards. Usually how the process is done, when a contractor needs something, they put a purchase order in, and then they get reimbursed. They should not have just access to money, the city money. And another thing that concerned me is, I know we have a store down there, and some of the purchases might be legit, I don't know. But I've asked for inventory on that store, and how much we make in this store. And I actually have seen the store, we don't have a whole lot, but I see lots of purchases, $200 at Publix, $300 at Publix. You can't make this stuff up. It just doesn't make sense. And then, I'm looking at some other things with P cards specifically, that are people that are running the Marina, and then just all different departments. I'm just not going to single out one person. Some of these P card purchases that I'm looking at, just doesn't make any sense. I mean, you have someone that works for the city, getting paid, and actually going to a golf tournament, taking three other people with them, which they were employees, because the names were on there, and I checked it out to see if these three were employees, and spending city money, $668. I would like to go golfing, and I, I would love for the city to pay me, for me to go golfing. People going online using their P cards, and this has to do with the Marina, how to bust your stress and renew your balance. Why am I paying, well, the people paying for stuff like this? I mean, if HR, I mean, I can actually read it. Stress is given, no one is getting out of life without their share of stress, and without being off balance once in a while. These are live virtual programs. Why are we paying for this stuff? I mean, if we, if we have a lot of employees that are stressed, maybe HR needs to put something together if these employees want to do this. But these people should, I have a lot of stress. I'm going to go see my doctor if I have stress. But I don't think city government should be paying for stuff like this. And it's too much for me to even look at. I don't get paid enough to do this. But I think we need some oversight on these P cards. When we have 900, roughly 900 employees, and we have about probably 280 with P cards. And it feels like there's no oversight by looking at a lot of this. And I think it all comes down to policy. Because when I'm looking at the policy of these P cards online, you're looking at 1998. That's a long time. That's before we even had computers. And then I find one updated 2006. But I can tell you, by looking at these P cards, we're not going by either policy. And I can understand why, certain things, because the policy states that you can only spend $100 on your P card. If you need to spend 300, you have to get your supervisor's permission. And then you can only spend 3,000 in a 30-day period. And then there's guidelines where you can't spend stuff. So I understand, these policies are very outdated. And, but I do think there needs to be oversight, because we shouldn't just have people just spending whatever they want. Especially a contractor should never have a city credit card, to me personally. So I know Mr. Belchew is here, and I would like to get the rest of the council to have him actually look into what is going on with the P cards, and maybe see what kind of, come back to us and see what kind of policy that we need to put in place, or any policies, matter of fact. But if you guys don't mind, it would be nice.
I was about to suggest that Commissioner Cantu, because I only use my card when I go to a conference. I didn't know I could go to get food and all of that. You mean I could do all? But, but it definitely needs to be, it needs to be a policy, it needs to be adhered.
And I'm not going to sit here and accuse, but there just looks like there needs to be some oversight, updated policy. And I know we approved Mr. Belchew's item today, and I would like, we haven't heard from him since we've actually hired him. I would like to see if he would like to come up and say anything on my, my time.
Okay.
But I definitely would like, and I'm glad everyone agrees, that we should have him start looking at these P card purchases.
Oh, allow us to?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Henry. Good evening, Commissioners.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, I think this mic is problematic for me, if I remember correctly, even last time.
It decides that you can raise on your...
I still did not get learned to it. Is it?
Oh, yeah.
All the whole time?
Yeah.
Does it work enough?
Yes.
I see. I think I said, "Good afternoon, Mayor Henry and Commissioner." I don't know, you know, Commissioner Cantu's particular detail, but you know, I am hired to do whatever you guys decided for me to look. If you decided to look at the P card, I'm more than happy to take a look at it.
What are we looking at with all that? Like details, you're just looking at the policy or the procedures, and then come back with a recommendation, or what?
No, I think if you ask me, if the commission decided to take a look at it, I will take a look everything. I will start, I think, you know, what is the current policy of the city, how people receive credit card, and also do a sample test, you know, what kinds of purchases they are using. I think when I take a look at things, I look beyond the policy. Say for instance, if the, the city has a policy contradictory to the use of prudent use of public resource, my recommendation will include it, you know, the commission need to, the city manager need to update the policy and the procedure. It's basically, I think, starting from whether the city has a proper policy in place, and also, you know, taking a look, you know, for what kinds of purpose the P card is used, what the expenditure look like, and making sure the amount of money is spent in the most efficient and effective way to serve the need of the city government. So, once you approved it, I will look at it, if it's approved exactly. With no limitation.
And I think we're all in agreement, because when I'm looking at it, and a P card purchase for one person, I'm looking at some of them $30,000 a year, all the way up to $150,000 a year, they're spending on P cards. And at the Marina, a contractor spending almost $80,000 a year, one contractor, I have a problem with a contractor having. I think those should be suspended right now, a contractor having any P cards. And I'm asking your opinion, if a contractor has P cards and has the ability to spend $25,000 a day, and I looked at one of them who spent $80,000 last year on their P card, and she's not a city employee. I have problems with that. Would, do you think that's a liability? Well, actually, the lawyer would think, but I've just never seen anything like it.
Looking as an auditor, I cannot speak without taking a look at the evidence and the documentation. So I think if you decided to authorize, I need to conduct the audit. I will do full and complete audit and all present the...
Commissioner Cantu and Commissioner Reed have said that they agree with, do you agree?
I would actually want them to, I'm assuming that when you do this, you start an investigation, correct? It's not just policy, it's policy applied to what's happening to create an investigation.
Yeah, I think how, what, how the thing go, I will start from the policy, right? Whether you have, the city has a proper policy in place or not. In the meantime also, I will take a look at the expenditure. Say for instance, if the expenditure is inappropriate, and I will say as such, if the expenditure is fraudulent, that will be turned into investigation. I think it will take to a different direction. If anybody, for example, abuse or use the fund for personal use, that will be an investigation. And I think the report will not be, you know, discussed until the audit is fully completed. Once the audit is completed, I will present it to you. You know, my role is to look things and to prepare a report and to make recommendations. I think the decision, you know, what to do about the rest was all of you guys.
Okay. Yes. You still?
Yeah, I would actually like to see if I can get the consent up here as well with the two contractors right now, and contractor employees that do have P cards active right now. I think anything they...
Their cars are not active.
Well, you sent me over two of them. There was 14 and two.
Their cars are no longer active.
So you already spent this minute. Thank you.
And I did want to make some comments in reference to what was...
All right. Definitely. Are you, you still got other things?
Well, I'll let him make comments, and I'm, I'm still.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to, for the record, because I do see the press writing, we have provided numerous emails and communications to Commissioner Cantu in reference to her items that she brought forward of her concerns. I do think it is very important, and it helps us as staff to have any, if there are any concerns that you all have as elected officials have in reference to policies, procedures, that they go through your hired auditor, because it helps us and not have five or six different staff members chasing the same information. So we think this is a very good process, that he is allowed to do his job and not have individual employees trying to find the information. One of the things that we think is also important, and this came from Commissioner Reed, many of you all received the State of Florida Executive Office of the Governor, Department of Governmental Efficiencies, how city governments should create their own Doge process. This came from the governor's office. We have the documents. We are wanting, as a staff, to create a Doge for the staff, and to have Mr. Belchew lead that for us to look at all the policies that you all think are right. So when we received the document from the State of Florida, Commissioner Reed contacted me on last, was it last week? We met about it. And so they gave us a actual document, say, "How to Doge Yourself." And they gave the parameters of what you should look at, from streamlining operations, reducing wasteful spending, eliminating programs that conflict with the voters' priorities, ensuring the existence of controls against fraud, and delivering services more effectively. So we're hoping that you all would allow for me to get with Mr. Belchew, to come up with names and people that he may work with within the city, to help him do the job of implementing our own, how do we Doge our own city. And so I think that will help, but also making sure that any concerns you have, don't individually request, come to me and staff, but they go straight through the auditor. It's what I'm, I'm hoping we can get support for.
I, as a commissioner, and as a citizen of Daytona Beach, I have every right to do a public record request, if someone comes before me, if that's what you're saying.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay. But I, I do, and because I do, when someone comes to me, I do my own investigation, and I'm pretty thorough, because I don't bring stuff up a lot.
That's not how I said, Commissioner.
Okay, I understand. And, but then, I make sure I'm not wasting anybody's time by doing my own investigation, because I can go on and on about these P cards, where I see people doing 300,000, let's say 300, about 300,000, seeing them doing multiple purchases in one day, and seeing where RFPs are not being put out, and it's being put on P cards. Because we have a lot of money actually going through P cards, and it seems like it's trying to avoid coming through the commission. But that's my personal opinion. And I am, and when I have someone come to me, I'm going to actually look at that and request the information, and I am entitled to request this information. And that's why I did the proper channel, because I could have sat there and dug and dug, and brought up so much, because I have a lot right now. But I think it's better that I came to you, because I see a lot of wrong, and have Mr. Belchew actually look into it. Plus, Mr. Feacher, and I want to say thank you for bringing that to your attention, and you have deleted those P, P cards, or deactivated those P cards for the contractors, because there is no way a contractor should have carte blanche to our money. So, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, I don't think they have carte blanche, but due to me wanting to make sure that we're clear that we're being transparent with that, because I did receive reports from the department director trying to analyze all of the expenditures. I said it is best for us to have the department director right now utilize the P cards to purchase items that for the past 20, 30 years, they've been allowed to have it. And so that's why I did it. I don't want us to put out, because I don't know for facts. And that's why I want Mr. Belchew, based off of your direction, to really look at that, because that is his profession, and that's not mine or staff's.
And yes, and that's why I think it's great that he is actually looking at it, because the department director doesn't look like he's doing his job as well. To me, that's why I want you to look at it, because I don't think he should be on the work, working and going on golf tournaments, taking his friend and paying on city dime. So, and yes, and I do have that proof. If you'd like me to put it, would you like me to put it up on the screen?
That's up to you. What I'm saying, though, is that I want us to be very clear, there are events that are sponsored by the city of Daytona Beach that deals with the Police Golf Tournament, the foundation, where we purchase a actual team for it. The policy is not saying that you can't have somebody else. So there are numerous events that people go through for the city, that we sponsor a table, or we sponsor a golf tournament. I know we sponsor that for the Boys and Girls Club, we sponsor that for the Police Foundation. So I just want us to be clear, because when we put things out in the open, there has to be some context to it. And if there is some areas where we find ourselves that we have done something that does not meet our policy, I know that Mr. Belchew and the commission will make sure we correct that. And that's why some of the things you've asked us to look at, look at, we have looked at. And I think putting it in the hands of a professional and not just a staff member is important, so he can bring back the communication to you all.
Yeah, it definitely will be nice, so you could be able to look at the $900 dinners on a Sunday down in New Smyrna as too. So, thank you.
Okay.
I want to, I want to say something.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. But Commissioner Cantu, are you, are you done? Because I'm ready to try to move on. Do you have any other comments on this matter?
Yes, I'm just happy that he's going to look into, I would like to see all receipts, because I have asked for all receipts, and actually, I don't have receipts for every P card purchase. And it looks like a lot of receipts are missing, because it looks like they've just been tossed away. And because I have been nights after nights going through this stuff, and I could stay here and say a lot, and turnover a lot. So I'm happy he's going to be doing this, and we'll see what comes out of this.
Okay. I will recognize Commissioner Henry, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Belchew. Commissioner Henry, your turn.
I, I just want to say that I do believe context matters. Especially when, when it could seem like everything is just coming from one specific point of view. Now, I can imagine that when staff uses P cards, because I, I know that I had an event last week. And we, we got some stuff from Chick-fil-A, so they probably swiped it at Chick-fil-A, and that same day, they probably went over to Publix to grab some stuff, and that was $200 or $300. And they probably went to the next store to grab something else, because I got something over at the Wing House, the Wing Place for my dinner. And that was, so I can imagine that it will swipe, swipe, and swipe, because the same person is probably handling the purchases for my event. I can imagine that there are not four or five people going and picking up things from my event. They probably say, "You're in charge of Commissioner Henry's event. You need to get everything. This is what you need to get from Publix. This is what you need to get from Sam's. This is what you need to get from the Wing Place." And so it could look like that they're swiping their card three or four times in a day, and they probably are. So yes, you may think, and it could sound like, oh, this person is just keep swiping and swiping and swiping, but context matters. So keep that in mind when you listen to this entire conversation. Context matters, and that's all I have to say.
And I want to say one more thing. It does actually matter when you're going to, and content does matter, when you see him purchases that skips boots, where these came from as well, when you see him purchase at Dick's Authority, Sports Authority, Dick's, what is that? So it does matter when you're seeing department stores, and when you, when you're also seeing that a city is paying taxes, and we're supposed to be tax exempt. So it does matter. I really do think it does matter.
Okay, you're, we're moving on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going back. I said what I said. No, I don't have it.
We'll go to Mr. Belchew. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think a couple of things I would say. I think first, if you decided for me to look at it, I think you need to also say, is it the highest priority? For example, I'll put it in front of the other work, or this is something not a priority, one thing, was your decision if you decided to go. Second, it's not very productive for me to hear also each of the commissioner's view about this, because it will impede my independence. I think, you know, for me to look something, to, I need to have unbiased mind, so that I will look things objectively. I will look things objectively. I think knowing, you know, with all due respect, each of your opinion will potentially have an impact for an auditor. You know, I don't think that will apply to me. But it's not a good thing. I think if you decided to ask me to audit, just, you know, vote and I'll take a look at it. If it is your higher priority, I'll put it in front of everything and I'll do that. But I think some of the conversation will be not, not constructive for, for my work.
Okay. I appreciate you letting us know that it's important that you be impartial and that we help you with that objective.
Thank you.
I believe it's important, but I also believe that the work that you've already established as important is important. So I, I can't speak for everyone, but I'm not trying to, I don't believe that our building is burning down. Okay? I don't believe it's burning down. I don't believe we're some agency that requires, you know, we're happy to have you and appreciative of the work that you're going to be able to do. And I think this is an important part of that work, because the procedures and the processes need to be in place. But I do not believe that, you know, we're in a place where we need to shout to the residents and to the community, saying that we're not doing things the way that they should be done. So unless the rest of you feel that this should just jump above everything else he's doing, I'm not at that point.
Oh, no.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
On a lighter note, I've been sitting up here for four years and I never had possession of a P card till Monday, day before yesterday.
All right.
Okay, so I'll say I've never had one and I don't want access to one. I want nothing to do with finances. I'm not interested. Right, one second. Well, as we go, are we taking a vote on whether or not we're going to move forward? Because I would like him to put this as a higher priority.
Okay. Who wants it as a high priority? Let's, let's vote. All those that wanted a high priority, please vote. One?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Those that do not want it as the highest priority, no. Vote no. Yes or no? No. Okay.
Kind of scary, huh?
Nothing. No, I have nothing to be afraid of. This is about context.
It's not scary at all. But if he's already doing previous work, all of it is important to me. All the work that he's doing. So whatever he's already doing, that's important to me as well. It's just as important to what the new things that we're adding on to, to you doing.
So we, we want you to do the work and balance it in the way that you see fit.
Thank you.
Could you tell me what the work you're doing right now?
I am about finished with the travel audit and I scheduled, I think, a workshop for all of you guys to hear the results. And, you know, you approved the audit plan. It's about eight auditing in one year, as you know.
You have to speak on the mic. They can't hear, sorry.
Yeah, the mic. I need to bring my own mic next time when I can. Yeah, I'm about to finish, you know, the, the travel audit and I prepared the report and I scheduled a workshop to review the results. And I have additional, I believe, seven audits coming. As you know, you know, I'm the only staff in the audit office, so that's how it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, kind of along these lines, but just so you know, I don't understand something. I have a package here. Do we all have this package about permits?
Yeah, that was something that Jim would be able to explain, too, and the residents supposed to be here, but I don't think he showed up, like he said, so you won't need it.
Okay. I was just flipping through it and it's interesting, too.
Yes.
It's very interesting, too. Okay.
Okay.
Just so you would have the truth, because-
Okay. Commissioner Henry, did you have any other comments?
I have comments tonight. I want to thank everyone that went out to Word and Praise Church, as I had asked you all to do in previous weeks. It's going to be a wonderful place for the community and all the things that they have planned to do and to partner with the City of Daytona Beach. And that's the kind of partnerships that we need and that's the kind of partnerships that we, we, we want to see, because we can't do it all. But we can partner and help those that want to do it for the community. So it's a beautiful place. They're going to have their ribbon cutting ceremony on Friday morning and I'll be there. I agree with, with Commissioner Ken, Commissioner Strickland, because I feel like if you represent the people, you should represent all the people. You know, I was at Cookman's game Saturday and I'm a rattler, so I didn't stand up for their alma mater, although I support them. I didn't stand up for their alma mater and the city manager looked at me and he said, "Now, Commissioner Henry, you know what? You're the commissioner for all the students in all the areas." And I know that that's, doesn't sound like a big deal, but it was transformational for me. If you know the rivalry between Cookman and FAMU, you probably know why. I feel like I'm going to support your school, but I only stand up for two alma maters, and that's FAMU and Mainland High School. And, and I stand up for them every single time. So I said that to say that those people in Tallahassee, they're, they're representative of all of us, everybody. And I think it's sad when you sack your own quarterback. And that's what I'm going to say about that. I had a community meeting and dinner at the police station and the sheriff's department sent someone out to talk with the parents about the children and online safety and threats in the community. And they're going to come back to our next meeting. And the police chief gave some, some good commentary and the mayor actually gave some good commentary. So sometimes people don't always want to come to the police department, because they think you're going to run your, they're going to run your name in order for you to get inside. So it wasn't as well attended as the one at the YSG. So we are going to take it back to YSG and invite everyone to come on out to the YSG and just let me know what your concerns are, what you want to see, what you need, what's going on in your specific area, your specific neighborhood, that you need addressed by pretty much different people in the community. I mean, different people in, in the, in the city. So we had our artisan market and we went from four vendors to nineteen vendors.
Wow.
I think we're, we're, we're set as far as we're only doing twenty-two vendors, I think she said, twenty-two vendors. And I called last week and we were already at nineteen, twenty, twenty-one vendors. So it's a wonderful place to come out. We had fresh fruit, a lady selling fresh fruit, fresh veggies, candles, you name it. It just was a wonderful, and it was very well attended by the community and it was walkable. So you saw people walking to the market at YSG. So it was a, that was a wonderful event as well. Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Strickland, and myself and the city manager participated in the Bethune-Cookman parade on Saturday. And that was a great way to get, make sure that the students knew that they were loved and supported by their community and Cookman won their game. And so that was a wonderful thing. And I think that is pretty much all of my comments for, that's all I have written. That's all I have done for tonight.
I was at the parade also, I might add.
You was using, okay, you were at the parade. The mayor was in a different car from us, so I forgot. He was in his own car, but it, it was great, it was a great opportunity to support the university and continue to support our schools. And Daytona is a college town, so, you know, we have to constantly be supporting our college students, because we want them to stay. We don't want them to, to just get their degree and leave. We want our brightest students to stay here in the community. And thank you, staff. I want to thank staff. I'm sorry. One more thing. I want to thank staff, because my community meetings, they have been doing a phenomenal job, showing up, making sure everything is ready, everything is prepared. And all we have to do is go up and speak to the community and the community has been enjoying those. We're going to have one more in November and then we won't kick it back up until January. And hopefully, if someone out there wants to be in charge of our neighborhood watch, we need a neighborhood watch captain in Zone Five, we would love to have you. And that is my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. And I have a lot of comments tonight, so, you know, make up. As you all know, well, before I get there, I'll start out with the fact that in addition to being a top twenty percent high school, Seabreeze High School bowling team, won its second straight state championship. So I think that's quite commendable. We're very proud of them for what they've achieved. Second straight state championship in bowling. So you guys know, and I was, an article in the paper about Tallahassee trip, that the city manager, Chief Building Inspector, Mr. Erghardt, and Deputy City Manager, Jim Morris and myself traveled to Tallahassee. I'd like to thank them for safe travel. City manager drove going and Mr. Erghardt drove coming back. And my wife was concerned when I was leaving. She said, "Well, who's driving? Who's?" I said, "I didn't know," but they did a good job. But in getting there, the city manager, staff put together a report that we shared with the folks at J-LAC, which was the Joint Legislative Audit Committee. So we had a presentation and the staff, I thought, did a magnificent job. The information that they composed or put together to put into this presentation was on point. So basically, when you go there, you know, you, you go, the committee has all of this information. So I realized that everything that I was going to present to them, they pretty much already knew. They had the information. They'd already researched it and, you know, they wanted us to come for some reasons, I guess, that, you know, it's, they're considered an oversight committee. So, you know, we respect the fact that it is their job to make certain that things are being done, you know, a certain way and in accordance to state standards. But unfortunately, when we, we got there, we, we went away with some things that didn't quite go as favorably as we thought they should have. The city was accused of not responding to J-LAC by one member of the committee who happened to be a representative of our area. But that wasn't, you know, true. We went back and reviewed the facts and we, as a city, have responded each time to J-LAC. Yet it was stated repeatedly that you haven't responded. And we, we had, that wasn't an accurate assessment. Then we were accused of not being able to construct as a part of our plan, which is to construct in addition to City Hall, that will house our permits and licensing division. And Mr. Morris accurately pointed out that the Attorney General's response to our earlier inquiry plainly states that we can legally add on to this construction using these funds. Yet it was stated multiple times that this wasn't legal. Yet we read the statistics or the facts into the record and we appreciate the fact that he read that into the record. Now, we did acknowledge and we have to acknowledge as a community that we have had this money. We know that we've had this money. And it's not been an easy process for us as a community to expend the money in a way that we thought was prudent. Because as I said to them, the number one thing that we do not want to do is to take this money and spend it in a way that does not benefit the residents of Daytona Beach and it doesn't make good use of the money. And so it was stated to us over and over again, but you've had year after year after year to spend this money and you haven't spent it. And we acknowledge that. But, you know, from our perspective, and we didn't get to state this into the record, it was my hope that those who represent our area would, would help us to find appropriate and effective ways to spend the money that would best benefit the residents of Daytona Beach. As you all remember, we made a request and we wanted to find ways to spend the money. I believe it was Commissioner Cantu's idea, to get them to allow us to be able to spend the money on things like flooding. We thought that was a great idea, but the representatives that, that represent us, you know, they weren't able to deliver on that for us. You know, I don't know if that was a part of their plan or if they didn't agree with it, but I know that the residents of Daytona Beach would probably likely agree, that if we could take that nine million and spend it on, on flooding or affordable housing, those are things that would most benefit our community. But that wasn't delivered to us by the folks who represent us. So we are, we're stuck with having to address it according to the mandate of the state. And as you all may know or may not know, I think it was 2020 or 2021, that they changed the policy. So this policy was changed and then they, then disallowed the capacity for a city to push forward or carry forward funds in excess, I think, of four million dollars. So we are over the limit and we're substantially over the limit and we do acknowledge that. We do believe that we have a plan and we had a spirited meeting and discussion and we think that the plan that we now have will work. It's our hope that if staff can come forward with an RFP that has been vetted, it's in the streams, to be brought back. So if it's brought back by November, I hope that you all will agree for us to go ahead and to spend the money to build in addition to our City Hall that will meet their demands. Because the one thing, and I will say this to anyone, that I do not want to do is to take nine million dollars, nine and a half million dollars, and give it to the investment community who invested in our community. They did invest building homes, building apartments, but I do not want to give the money back to them. Now, I know some folks and it seemed to be a part of their, their drive in Tallahassee was that they thought that, just give it back to the investors. I don't think the residents of Daytona Beach want that and I certainly do not want that. Now, if it were, if we were allowed by Tallahassee to give the money back to the residents of Daytona Beach, all of the folks who pulled a permit who live in Daytona, all of the folks who bought a house during this time, and we could take the money and rebate it back to our residents, I would be the first one standing up to say, "Let's give it back to those folks." But that's not allowed in Tallahassee. They don't permit you to give it back to the residents. It's only required to be given back to the investment community. And so we are going to do all that we can to make certain that we comply with their edicts, their mandates, their expectations, by making certain that we expend the money in a way that, now, that meets our needs, meets our demands, may not be the ideal absolute one hundred percent best, but it's what's best within the parameters of what they've given us. Because they've given us a very narrow set of prescriptions by which that we can appropriate this money. And since they've done that, we're going to use the measures that they've given us and that's what we'll do.
Mayor, can I say something regarding that, since you went there and we would, I'd like to, I would like to put input on that?
Can you say it after I finish?
Yes.
Because I want to, I want to make sure that I-
If you're staying on that same subject, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Now, while we were there, the meeting was spirited and, you know, I would like to commend Representative Traymark, who chairs, co-chairs the committee. I thought he did an outstanding job of keeping the meeting running, ensuring that the meeting ran smoothly and that it didn't get out of whack or off kilter too much. We faced the stiffest inquisition from those who represent us. You know, Senator Wright, he was, he, he gave his, you know, he's, they're given a responsibility- You know, Senator Wright, he was, he gave his, you know, he's given a responsibility, so they took it, you know, and they took it seriously. We were given stiff questioning from Senator Leake, who's not on the committee. So I wasn't certain why he was in the meeting, but he was there, and he's not a member of that particular committee, yet he was one of the main individuals who passed on questioning to his colleagues, and he raised many questions himself. I was frustrated during the meeting, and I got home that night and thought about it because much of, you know, and Senator Leake is an attorney, and he's a skilled attorney. And I was very happy to have Deputy Manager Morris, because in his series of questioning, he made mention of documents that were a part of, he asked about information that came from draft documents, documents that our staff that had drafted. And so I'm sitting there looking through the book like, well, how could he have documents that we drafted? Why would he have documents that were drafts? Now, draft is not something that's been completed or passed on to us. I would have, I've never seen the draft documents that staff, you know, compose. I've never seen one, I've never asked for one. So he's pulling information and questioning us about information that our staff drafted. So I went away wondering, well, how in the gahana did he even get that information? And so while, and so what I want to know from you, Mr. Manager, is I want you to figure out if any of your staff members shared with him drafts, or if they, because, you know, he's an attorney, and I don't do public records. I don't do public records, but he might have done public records for it. I don't know why he would, but I just, I don't want to know tonight. But I'd like for you guys to go home, check your...
I don't think staff did. I think I did.
Did what?
There was, we've had tons of budgets come before us and said, "We bought trucks." And I have had a senator, not Senator Leake, but I've had a senator ask me about these trucks. And you heard him up there, and actually, that project says it's completed. Why would we act like we have bought trucks with that? And then we sent a original draft in stating we didn't?
No, I'm not asking about trucks. I'm asking about the drafts, but so you...
I sent in trucks, yes.
Well, there was other, I'm not talking about the truck, because he definitely asked about the trucks, which I thought the issue of the trucks was an issue, it was a major issue to me. He nitpicked over why we bought an F-150 as opposed to a F-250, which F-150 costs...
What's a $10,000 difference, he said?
It is $10,000 difference. But a F-250 holds up a lot better than an F-150. You know, I know that as a person who's owned many trucks, heavy-duty trucks. But anyway, I want to, I just want you to look up and see if our staff sent documents to Senator Leake or, because I was standing before them, and they're questioning me about something that I had never seen, and I would like to know how that happened. Because it was frustrating, and I felt like I was working against, had someone working against me or working against the city. Now, I understand that the folks in Tallahassee do what the folks in Tallahassee do, and I respect their role and their responsibility and their election. But I'm representing the folks in Daytona Beach, and I'm trying to present matters in a way that makes us, helps us to be successful. You know, I'm not trying to hide anything from anybody, but I just wonder how he got that. So I would appreciate it if you would help to find, you find that out and then get back to us and let us know. Now, again, I'm going to ask you all to be sure, to be prepared to vote when this matter comes before us. And it won't be long, because we don't want to be in Tallahassee next year having to go through this. Because it seemed to me as though there was, you know, and we're not the only city that has experienced this hardship. There are at least five other cities, I believe, that's at the same level that we are, and many other cities that have received these letters. We are the first and the only one to be summoned to Tallahassee for this purpose.
Us being the one, the only, and the first.
Well, we are the first and the only one who's been summoned to Tallahassee for this particular purpose. And we were summoned by the people who represent us. You know, it wasn't someone from Miami, wasn't anyone from South Florida. It was the people who represent us who summoned us in the name of transparency and in the name of oversight. Oversight about matters that other cities have, asking us questions about our CRAs. Has nothing to do with this particular issue. So, you know, we just, as Commissioner Henry said, we just want the people of Daytona Beach to, because we have 85,000 people in Daytona Beach, and we want the same level of representation that everyone else from Volusia County gets. And if we're going to get scrutinized and get the inquiry, give it to all the other municipalities that you represent. Don't just give it to us. With that said, I was happy to represent you. I did my very best to be civil, to be cordial. But I don't want to go back up there next year and have to ask them to give us the money or tell us what to do with the money. So let's make sure that we do what we have to do to be successful before we get back to that point. That concludes this portion of my remarks. Commissioner Cantu?
Yes. I just wanted to, for transparency, if anybody actually wants to watch it, go to floridachannel.org, go to Video Library, and look up Legislative Audit. You can watch the whole entire audit in Tallahassee. Again, that's the floridachannel.org video library legislative audit. And second, actually, I was elected at the end of November 2020. We have been in the audit a little bit longer. It actually really started heating up supposedly in 2020. I did not find out about that audit to about a year and a half ago. No one actually told me, and I sat up here and said that. And I was told, when I said that, it was up on the website. Well, I, you know how many things are on the website? And actually, what was funny about that, how I found out about it is staff bringing back, to buy a mobile command center, and then also the asbestos building, which I fought hard for both, letting everyone know, "You cannot buy that by state law." But we kept on sitting there fighting and fighting, "We're going to buy this," and keeping, ignoring that we have those fees. And I would like to know, when I watched that video, there was, Senator Broder asked, "Where's the half a million dollars in interest?" I asked you at my agenda review, you told me it would be told today, and I'm still waiting.
Funds are in account. I'll make sure to get the exact account and make sure all of you all have that, because we're going to actually respond to every single item from that meeting in writing, because we think it's important that we have the actual facts that is given back to the J-LAC Committee, because some of those committees' members, this was their first time at a committee meeting.
Okay. And I actually, by watching it, I didn't think it was actually politics, maybe a few, but it was both aisles up there drilling us, both. And I understand what they were saying, because, I mean, Pizzo, he's, I mean, all of them, they're from different aisles, that was, so please watch it. And I, I'm concerned, and I understand why they're concerned, because we've been going on and on and on with this audit, keep trying to do things, and then we tell them up there that, "Oh, we don't, development is down. The reason we had, you know, all these fees is because of the explosion. But now development is done, down, and now we need a new City Hall." Well, why do we need a new City Hall? We need more staff when development is, you know, so it doesn't make any sense. So if we are going to expand this City Hall, maybe we need to take code out of that building that we pay rent on and bring them back over here. So we're saving money for the people, because it's their money and not ours. And as they kept saying, that's why I like people to watch it, it seems like we're just spending to spend, not actually for the people. And they did say that a few times.
Just because they said it.
Maybe we're not, maybe we're not. But we're trying to buy these bigger buildings and these command centers for permanent licensing, and I can tell you, I checked everywhere in the state. I've never seen a permanent license have a command mobile center, but I've seen police, but I've never seen when that was brought to us. But anyway, also, we are being sued as well for Minto, $3 million for permanent licensing. So if we're going to spend that money and we end up having to pay Minto, where is that money going to come from? The general fund? And that's what I would like to ask Ben. Should we be putting that money aside in case we lose a lawsuit?
Yeah, I don't think we should, I don't think we should comment too much on the lawsuit, but we've talked with Mr. Fietzner internally in my office about reserving a balance in case we lose that suit. But obviously, we'd have to look at all those issues later on when the RFP came in and you all decided what you wanted to do with the money.
So that would be maybe a shade meetings discussion or something?
Well, we will have to have a shade meeting on the Minto lawsuit for separate reasons at some point in the near future.
I just want to make sure that we have that money to pay if something would happen. I'm hoping we don't, but I would hope we have the money, because I don't think the residents would be really happy with this if we're taking more money out of the general fund to pay for a lawsuit that we've been overcharging for permanent licensing. And I've asked a few times in workshops as well if we could look at our permit and licensing fees and we make sure we're charging the correct amount. I think we should be doing this periodically, or maybe every quarter, making sure we're charging so this doesn't happen again as well. And by just sitting there, and we did, yeah, we did waive fees, but the whole time we waived those fees for six months, we were still collecting. So I just think it's something that we really need to sit down and look at if we are still collecting these fees. I mean...
All right.
I want to say something. I'm going to jump back in real quick, because if both sides were having a spirited conversation with us or drilling us, my concern is that one side was far, 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 far more prepared with a lot of inside information than the other side. So sometimes if you're on the other side and you don't really know, because you haven't had access to all that inside information, then you don't really know the full scope of things. You don't know the full scope of things, because you're just kind of trying to go along with what you're hearing right then and right there, and you're listening to other people say particular things that could be true or could not be true or misleading, misleading. I'll say that, misleading. I won't say that they were lies, but I will say that they were misleading. So I do want to make sure that we know that when we say both sides participated in this, one side seemed like they were sacking their quarterback because they had a lot of inside information, and the other side really didn't have very much information, and they kind of just was going on what was being said at the, in real time.
I could never have said it any better than what you just said.
But actually, the...
Hold it, hold it.
The person was asking...
Hold it, hold it, hold it. I could not have said what you said anywhere near as well as you just said it, because that's exactly what was taking place. You have people who didn't know on the committee really what was going on, and then you had a group of folks on the committee who all knew what was going on, and they were there with a purpose and an intent to make things look a certain way, and they were making things look a certain way, and they were not acknowledging the facts. The fact is that the Attorney General said that you could spend the money on this, and they repeatedly said, "I'm not sure if that's the case." Yet they are attorneys, and it said it, and even when it was read into the record, they would not admit it. They said that we didn't respond to J-LAC. Wasn't true. So the facts were not obvious, and so when you, things, we know, we live in a society where people say things that are untrue or provide innuendos and make things sound a certain way, and then it makes everybody else believe it. Whereas the other folks in the room, they didn't have all of that information. They were not colluding or coming together to make things look a certain way. They hadn't talked to members of the committee. So I not only witnessed it, I experienced it, and I watched it in live action, as one member's sitting here talking and feeding the questions back across to the other side of the room, who represents this area. So I don't, I mean, they did what they did. We have an opportunity to spend the money now. They didn't take the money. Okay? That was my purpose for going there, to make certain that they did not take the money. And so now we can appropriate the money, spend the money and use it in a way that we see fit as a community, the way that we're allowed. Because in conclusion, they begrudged us, beat us down because they felt like we didn't spend the money, but they give you this narrow set of prescriptions and ways that you can spend the money. Very narrow, not very many ways that you can spend this money. Let's acknowledge that. And we have had an explosion of growth in this community, which led to us generating these funds. That's what led to it. It's not, didn't just happen by accident. It happened because of growth that they have supported. So then when we couldn't spend the money the way that they wanted us to spend it, we asked them to give us a bevy of ways to be able to spend it. No such thing came forth from Tallahassee, sitting on their hands, not, "No, no, you only spend it this way." It's as if you want the money to go back to the development community, which I don't believe that the people who live here, that's what they want. So I'm, that's my feelings about this situation. I will allow you to have remarks, and then we're going to move on.
Thank you. And if you watch it, Senator Pizzo, he was really drilling us, and that ain't the same side that you were talking about with it. And I'm just saying, and what I kept hearing, what I kept hearing about this side is they didn't have the Attorney General. But if you look in the record, I don't think some people weren't doing their job, because it was submitted, I blessed by the city, because I saw it in there. So maybe they weren't reading it when they were asking, but it is actually in that document when you look it up at the state. But either side, it doesn't matter, we are doing wrong, and it's been going on way too long, and it's something that needs to be corrected. And that money is legally, really, their money. We overcharged them, and we're still not...
How did we overcharge them? That's not accurate.
That's why...
We did not overcharge them.
By state law, they have been overcharged because we kept collecting fees. We should be looking at our fees and going back and seeing what we actually should be charging.
Oh, that's what you're talking about. Okay. That's your opinion, and that will be determined...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I know you don't want us to talk about it.
So I get that this is a charged conversation, but I think we need to avoid using labels that may not reflect legally what's going on, and that may negatively affect us in the litigation. One example of a label would be overcharging.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
You could conceive of ways in which, from a policy basis, you might state that maybe we shouldn't have proceeded in a certain way, but we should not concede, and we do not concede that those were overcharges.
And what do you call it, please, Mr. Gross?
I call that generating fees in a manner that the statute allows us to generate fees to a point where we attain what's called an excess fund balance with respect to which the statute imposes specific restrictions on expenditures. That's what, that's what the statute's...
So we actually were collecting when, over the amount that was allowed by state law?
No, that's not what the state statute says, and I think the longer that we have this discussion...
Could you please read it?
We're going to conclude this discussion, because it's my time, we're going to conclude this part of discussion, because we're not able to not go into areas that he's asking us not to go into for reasons that benefit our community. And at the end of the... And at the end of the day, I work for the people of Daytona Beach, and I don't want to do anything that hurts the people of Daytona Beach. What I'm trying to do up here is to help, support, defend, protect the residents of Daytona Beach first and foremost. And I believe that's the objective and agenda for all of us. So as we prepare to move on to comments from you guys, I will just say this. That everything that's said is not always true. And everything that's done is not always right. And as I've sat up here, I have never mentioned anything about a side. What side of the aisle anybody sits on or they don't sit on? I work with anybody. But at the end of the day, I'm on the side of the people of Daytona Beach. I'm in a nonpartisan role, doing nonpartisan work. And if people have partisan issues, that's their problem. I don't have no partisan issues when I go to work. I go to work for the people of Daytona Beach, and I just wish that everybody who represents us would go to work with the same mentality and the same approach. Mr. Manager, do you have any comments?
I have no comments tonight.
Mr. Attorney?
No, thank you.
All right, at this time, we will now hear from the residents of Daytona Beach.
All right, our first speaker tonight is John Nicholson, and on deck is Fred Coulter. Is he? Okay. Oh, there he is.
John, you can go right down.
Actually, you might leave it there, it might work better.
That's where it works better.
Yes.
This, yeah, this is a terrible mic, it really is, because the residents can't hear you. Right? And we can't hear some of you guys either.
I agree, and it has an echo.
Yep. Couple of things. One, on the agenda, there was the $35 million for the ballpark. Is that in addition to the 30 million with the 32 million that popped up? It gets kind of confusing. Are we, we, are we just taking the 30 million and adding to it? So what is the ultimate ballpark? I have no idea. I remind you that the CRA will sunset, hopefully, in 10, 11 years. We need to start using TIP funds, and we've got to... I mean, there's no sense in giving away that money. Bringing that up with regard to the cost of fees, when you charge a fee, it doesn't change depending on how many people show up at your door. If there's a fee that you charge for permits and licensing, it stays that way. So if you have a good year, you make money. If you have a bad year and nobody bills anything, you have a loan amount of money. You don't adjust that fee. So the idea that we're overcharging is ridiculous. Secondly, we absolutely do not want to give that $9 million back to the residents. Two, we don't want to give it back to the people that paid it. Because it's not fair. If you go back two years or three years, everybody before them had to pay it. Everybody next year is going to have to pay it. So the idea that they're getting overcharged or not is ridiculous. If you, if you want to do the business, you pay the fee, and it's paid, period. So as far as I'm concerned, that addition, I'm not happy with it. But we need to spend the money. I don't want to give it back, and that's the easiest and fastest way to do it. So please, when that comes up, please pass it. With regard to the rec center, when we take it down, consider, one of the problems with the rec center was that we didn't have parking. There was a problem with parking. So I'm asking you to consider, when that comes down to put parking and to, when that building that the Petuga's are using, we need it as a rec center for the city. Downtown doesn't have any place. The seniors don't have any place downtown. So we need something downtown to substitute for what the rec center used to be. So that building would be perfect. If we put parking on that area, we have parking for the Petuga Building, and we put a museum or what they want between the two buildings. So that's adjacent to where the rec center was. And we maintain it to be WAC-generated museum or monument or whatever. So also, it was brought up about children downtown. The perfect location is at the library. The north end has all kinds of facilities. We need to expand that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Fred Coulter, and on deck is James Carey.
Oh, it's not as bad as I thought. I thought I'd need a chair to stand on. Fred Coulter, 820 North Tuxedo Avenue, Deland, Florida. When this country was founded, we stumbled into a form of government that actually has some levels of genius to it, and I really wish it was planned. Because we had 13 individual nations forming a bigger nation, we created a federal system where there's a central government, which did some stuff, and everything else was thrown out to the states. Here in Florida, we did, for a while, do the same thing. We had something we called Home Rule, where the state would do statewide things, and the counties and the cities would do the things that affected them. In my 20 some odd years of playing the government finance and budget game, which it's nice to take vacation from, we are under the worst situation I've ever seen in terms of Home Rule. Six months ago, while developing the budget, Daytona Beach News Journal, hi there, had an article. Fifty different bills in the legislature attacking Home Rule. Simultaneously, Jim Cameron, who's no longer here, on his podcast, had a state legislature onboard doing the normal legislative updates, and he was telling us, "We have this bill, this singular bill, and we're going to let the cities opt out." Fifty attacks, one opt-out. This is as bad as I've ever seen it. We need to do something about this. The advantage to Home Rule is that you see the problems here in Daytona far more than the people in Tallahassee do. Somewhat more than the people in Deland do at the county level. But right now, you're being ripped to shreds. You really need to do three things. One, you need to fight it and work with the other cities, and I don't know how you're going to do that. Two, you're going to look at what you do to see what it is that you're giving as ammunition for the people that decided to go in here, because it's not all just power. Some of them think that they actually will do that. Some of it's power, some of it is they aren't thrilled with what they see cities do. And the third thing, and this is the one that's going to take a lot of work, staff can do efficiency stuff. We can dig in, well, sorry, I'm not there anymore. We can, they can go through and look at the widgets and all that and say, "What do we need to spend the money on?" The problem is, you are facing fundamental, huge cuts in revenues in the next couple of years. And that means looking at everything you do on a low level and prioritizing it. What needs to be cut? Staff can't cut programs because they don't know your priorities. They aren't elected by the voters. You need to sit there and go, "Well, if this and this, you have to cut that if you can't do them both." And that needs to be you, and that's going to be a lot of digging on your part. And I'm very sorry, but that's either that or you're going to be doing ad hoc, and who knows how it's going to... Thank you.
Good to see you, Fred.
Oh, I'll be back.
Our next speaker is James Carey, and on deck is Tom Russell.
I want to say, good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to read this so that I can get through it real quick. My wife, she's supposed to have been up here, she's the more vocal one. So I'm, she fell a little sick, so I'm going to try to fill in for her. It's a pleasure to introduce Kenneth Grant Inspiration, a signature photography and graphic design firm here now located at 101 South Armada Ave. We've been proudly serving our community for the past nine years now with the last five right here in Daytona Beach. Our mission is simple, is to capture images and portraits that speak, images that tell stories and engage audiences. We love people, and that's what we love to capture. Whether through photography or design, we believe in the power of visuals to make a lasting impact. Now, we're excited to share that Kenneth Grant Inspiration is now relocating here to the heart of the downtown district. We're excited about that. After four wonderful years at the shops of One Daytona, we've also applied for city fund grants to help with our renovations, which are already underway, and we look forward to creating a space that is both welcoming and creative. Now, beyond our business, we're deeply committed to our community. We founded a nonprofit initiative called the Coulter View Photography Exhibition, which for the past five years highlights members of our community. It challenges negative stereotypes and encourages our youth in a positive light and for them to dream bigger and see themselves really, really well. We have exhibited at six different art galleries and museums here in Daytona Beach. As we celebrate our 10-year milestone next year, we're filled with gratitude, especially for our clients who entrusted us. I see some of you guys here. And the partners who've supported us, especially this great city. You guys have been behind us with our Coulter View, just impacting the community, and we greatly appreciate that. And so we can't wait to continue our journey here in the downtown Daytona Beach, inspiring art, service, and community connection. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Tom Russell, and on deck is it Riley Roundtree?
Tom Russell, 603, the real North Beach Street. I've heard all this information. I haven't been here for two or three meetings. I've missed everyone. I see things are interesting as usual. But my concern is the spending of the CRA money that belonged to Blue Road. This is kind of what you're talking about as far as the city money that was supposed to be for this, and it got used for that. I had an occasion to say, okay, I want to see what was this money spent on. It's very hard to come up with any kind of an answer. I asked for some expenditures, I got a file that I couldn't open. So I understand frustration that you might have had, you may understand mine, when you took the money from the Blue Road CRA and you all voted on it. When you took that money and decided to put payroll in there so that you could take that other payroll, other CRAs, and spend it on something you wanted to spend it on, because you didn't want to spend it on the Blue Road CRA. You wanted to put the screws to it. You know, it's five years I've looked at these numbers. At one time, there was $1.6 million there. That was 2002, 2002, 2022, I'm sorry. And it, interesting point, interest income on that $1.6 million was $5,600. I thought that was great, great investing. I don't know who does it, but you're not going to retire on that kind of money with that kind of rate. But in any event, I don't want to beat a dead horse. You've got a lot of things that you've got to handle. I, I'm going to object to the way the money has been spent. My building did flood again. I know there were king tides. The street was closed a number of times because of the tides. All right? Nobody cares. Doesn't matter that it's my money, doesn't matter that I pay taxes, doesn't matter that the CRA had money that it could use something with to eliminate it. Route Canal is a drainage point, and the city pumps water from North Street to that area. High tide comes along. Don't have to be brilliant to figure out. You've got the water blocking it here from the high tide. You're pumping water in from North Street. It floods the street. Simple as that. I don't know who I'd ask to go. You know, I don't have a committee to go to. I've got commissioners. Blue Road is not even considered when they do the meetings. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is it Riley Roundtree? And on deck is, is it Zalina Malav?
Riley Roundtree, 625 South Keefe Street, Daytona Beach, Florida, 3211. So say it all again.
No, say it loud.
Just be loud. Riley Roundtree, 625 South Keefe Street, Daytona Beach, Florida, 32114. Good evening. My name is Riley Roundtree. I'm in eighth grade, and I'm the Spartan A captain at Campbell Middle School. I'm also involved in the Royal Corps and the Mayor's Honor Society. Being in the marching band at Campbell has taught me how to lead, how to take advice, and how to focus on my personal goals. The marching band has given me a safe space over the last two years that can't be replaced. It's become a good second home to me. When we perform, whether it's a parade or an onstage ensemble, it's an energy surge for everyone in the band. It's a chance for us to showcase our abilities, and when we do, we don't only represent Campbell, but represent Daytona Beach as a whole. Many of the students in the marching band don't come from much, so they usually can't afford the fee. But as motivated students in the number one Spartan marching band, we work hard to fundraise, but we still need extra support to help us look and sound the best for our audience. Your support makes our performances possible. When leaders like you invest in us, it shows students that our community believes in us and that you see potential inside of us. Because of the friends I've made along the way and the leadership qualities I've learned over the years, I want to keep performing in high school. I want to show the future generations that, like, what it's like to be in color guard and do what I'm doing, and I want to inspire them. Thank you for giving me your time tonight, and thank you for listening to what I have to say.
Gracious enough to stand up and talk to us.
You did well.
You did great. You will.
My next speaker is it Zalina? Please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing it. And on deck is Tamia Brooks.
Zalina Malave, 625 South Keefe Street, Daytona Beach, Florida, 32114. Good evening. My name is Zalina Malave. I am in eighth grade, and I have been a member of the number one marching marching Spartans band for two years. Sadly, this will be my last year. Being in this band has taught me discipline, perseverance, how to be a leader and not a follower, how to be confident in myself, and has also given me a place in this little but tough world we call middle school. I used to feel alone, but because of Mr. Watson in this band, I feel like I have found a second family. When we march in parades or do ensembles and local events, we are not just representing our school and our amazing band director. We are also representing the whole Daytona Beach community. It's an honor to showcase our talents whenever we're given a chance to display our hard work. Many of us band members have families who would love to pitch in and help us, but often cannot, and cannot do so because they can't always afford uniforms or band fees. Due to this misfortune, outstanding performers can't perform alongside us because of financial burdens. We put a lot of effort and work into our yearly fundraisers. However, we still need support so every student with an interest in the band can perform alongside us and not on sidelines. Your support makes our performances a reality. When leaders like yourselves support and invest in us, it shows us students that the community believes in us and sees potential in us, which makes a profoundly significant difference. Because of the band, I feel more confident in myself. I'm trying for a solo this year, which I would have never done back in my first year. But because of this, but no, because of the band, this has helped me step out of my comfort zone and try more, speak more, and do more. Because of, because of the band, I feel a stronger sense of belonging, which is a rare but valuable experience in middle school. It has shown me that with enough practice and dedication and confidence, you can open doors. With all the lessons I have learned, I want to pursue this extracurricular activity all the way through college and hopefully earn a scholarship. Thank you for taking the time to hear us and for supporting me in hearing our stories. We hope you will continue to support us and help us create music and memories for not only ourselves... We hope you will continue to support us and help us create music and memories for not only ourselves, but also for the entire community of Daytona Beach.
Thank you. Great job.
Okay, our next speaker is Tameya Brooks, and on deck is, is it Maya Brooks?
Tameya Brooks and Maya Brooks, 625 South Keats Street, Daytona Beach, Florida, 32114. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tameya Brooks, and I have the honor of serving as this year's drum major for the Campbell Middle School band.
Hello, my name is Maya Brooks. Tameya's twin sister. I also have the honor of serving alongside her as drum major for the Campbell Middle School, number one Spartan, marching Spartans. Under the direction of our band director, Mr. Brishon Watson, and our supportive principal, Ms. Marcia Owens. We're here tonight to share how much our band means to us and to ask for your support. Our program now includes 257 talented musicians who proudly represent our school and the city of Daytona Beach. Being part of the band has taught us teamwork, discipline, and dedication. For me, it's become a family outside of my home, a place where I can truly be myself. We worked hard at every rehearsal and every performance to represent Campbell with pride, whether it's at concerts, parades, or competitions. But we also rely on fundraising and community generosity to help cover the cost of instruments, uniforms, sheet music, and travel. Sadly, some of our classmates have had to step away because of the financial strain on their families. That's why we're here, because we believe music isn't just about performing. It's about opportunity, growth, and becoming the future leaders of this county. Every donation, large or small, directly supports our dream to perform, to learn, and to continue representing our school and our community with excellence. Thank you for supporting our band and believing in us.
Okay, and our next speaker is, is it Stefana? And on deck is Tessa Randolph.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nia Coffey. I am a band parent at, um, um, excuse me. My name is Nia Coffey, and I'm a band parent. Um, I'm here on behalf of the incredible band students that y'all heard from, from Campbell Middle School. As a, um, as a chorus alumni from Campbell Middle School myself, I am, I know firsthand how much music changes lives and how it teaches teamwork, discipline, and gives our kids a sense of belonging and purpose. Today, our goal is to raise $100,000 to provide new instruments, uniforms, and opportunities for these talented students to perform and represent our community with pride. Every dollar makes a difference. You're not just giving to a band. You're investing in our children's future and keeping the music alive. Thank you for your compassionate, your compassion and support. Um, and just give them a hand one more time.
So our next speakers, is it Tessa Randolph and Ian Thomas?
Tessa Randolph, Ian, Ian Thomas, 625 South Keats Street, Daytona Beach, 32114. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. My name is Tessa Randolph, and I hope you've had a good night.
My name is Ian Thomas. We're both eighth grade students at Campbell Middle School, number one marching band. I play the tuba.
And I play the French horn. This is my second year in band.
And this is my third.
This is, this amazing band has helped me socialize and make new friends with a lot of kind of interesting people.
This amazing band has helped. Being in a musical program have been extremely engaging and momentous experience for us. The thought of this could be my last year is devastating.
Since, since being in band, I've noticed my ability to memorize and focus is better. While in band, I've made some of my best achievements, like getting through an honors geometry class or even making the honor roll the last couple of quarters.
We're, um, we're forever thankful to have been given the chance to showcase our identity and really exhibit, um, exhibit our worth and skill.
If you've ever noticed, our band has been a part of many different performances, such as the Bethune-Cookman Parades, Christmas Parades, and even, um, last month's Hard Rock Hotel Music Festival.
Despite our efforts to fundraise on our own, a lot of students and families still need a little bit of support, much like every human being. All we're asking is just, is a little bit for empathy.
As you may know, the cost of instrumentation and uniforms can add up expeditiously. We need to work, we need to look at our absolute best.
Um, people in our power, empowered like you can give us that push that we need to reach our goals.
Your empowerment would mean the world to us, and your collaboration makes our program possible. We're a pawn on the, on the chessboard in need of help.
Band presents hundreds of different pathways in life and can help lead us to a bright future of musical scholarship.
We're both eternally grateful for your time this evening, and we wish you'd continue representing not only our school, but the city of Daytona Beach.
We're honored to have given you this speech and express our gratitude towards you. Good night and thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brishon Watson, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
Brishon Watson, 625 South Keats Street, Daytona Beach, Florida, 32114. Good evening, commissioners and members of the community. Let me first say, I thought my students were joking. We, we had a band parent meeting on Monday, and I let them know that I was coming to this meeting, like I did the last one. I just didn't get a chance to speak. And a few students said, oh yeah, I want, I want to come. I'm speaking, I'm presenting. We could present too. And from there, you just saw a few of them, and I am extremely proud for them coming up here and speaking in front of you, for sure. Um, it's clear how much music has impacted them, and similarly, music gave me a path forward. It allowed for me to become a first-generation college student at Bethune-Cookman University, where I marched with the pride of marching Wildcats and served as both drum major and head drum major for two years. And still, with the pride, every Saturday, I'm with them. I'm helping them out and working with them. But this time, I'm leading the next generation. For almost seven years, I have served as a public educator with Lucian County Schools, and every moment has been dedicated to Campbell Middle School, where I was just named Teacher of the Year. When I first arrived, we had 18 students in the after-school group. Today, we've grown to 257 young musicians, where that's one-third of the school's population. We, this year alone, we have 23 performances on the schedule, and it's still counting. We've gone from small district-required events to major opportunities, like the Bethune-Cookman Homecoming Parade showcasing nearly 100 students on, on the, on the, on our last one. And this coming March, we've had a special invitation to perform at Universal Studios for the Heritage Festival. Our students have worked hard to earn these moments, but despite the growth, we did hit a wall. And out of the 257 students I teach every day, many share or use damaged equipment. We're short on uniforms, reeds, mouthpieces, and repair funds. The simple things that makes music possible. Now, though this will cover issues, we have an ambitious fundraising goal, which I have provided for you guys individually, so you could take home and look at on your own time and consider. But behind the numbers are students with, with dreams and goals. When families can't meet the financial demands, those dreams start to fade. And in the first quarter, I've lost 23 students and had them leave my program. But I see the power music has every day. Nearly 40% of our National Junior Honor Society members are from the band program. A quarter of our SGA and many of our top academic leaders come straight from the band room. When you invest in our program, you're not just buying instruments. You're building an opportunity. You're showing our families that this community believes in their children's future. And like a student mentioned earlier, being a pawn, a pawn on a chessboard can grow to be whatever it wants to be if you can get it to the other side. And if we don't support and protect our pawns, they'll be the first ones to be sacrificed in the games that we play. So thank you for your time and support and believing in the power of music.
How much do you need?
So, um, just for, um, just for this year alone, we are, we are pushing that one, um, 100, um, 100, um... Sorry, I'd rather not be flustered, rather look, look at my numbers for sure. So this breakdown that, that we have right here is, is our three, is our three-year plan. Um, it does, it does hit a 200, um, $205,000 goal. But again, that is a three-year plan. That breaks, um, breaks everything down for what we need from instruments, things of that nature. This year alone, if we're counting the, um, universal trip that we're trying to make sure we fundraise, fundraise for, we are looking at the, we're looking at 100, 125,000, roughly 126,000. And we have been fundraising. We have reached out to a few, few investments on our own just the last two weeks alone. We did, we, we did reach that 9,000, 10,000 marker, and that's just two, two weeks. We did send some emails out, and we did get a few investment commitments, um, ranging into the three, um, 30,000, 30,000, 30,000, 31, 32, um, commitment investments. So we're working extremely hard for sure, but again, as I said, it's going to take a little minute for sure, and the more support we can, we can have, the better.
So, um, you are in, in my future zone, future part. We don't know in litigation wise what goes on yet. But, um, as of right now, I would say yes. So I have to, I would have to say when our Bike Week funds come in, that will be a direct relationship to the community. We get Bike Week funds based, and then we reinvest into the community. So I would like to take $1,000 for mine and put that into, when they renew, um, go into the band program for Campbell. Thank you. We've spoken before, so I'm glad you're doing this. I'm so glad you listened.
Of course, and, and, and your letter specifically, I actually said, you know, we met before our, our, thank you. Any other questions?
You, go ahead.
Are we getting Bike Week funds this year?
You didn't get it last year either. I do not know the answer to that question.
Can you answer? Did you, did you receive them last year? No, you didn't. I, I think, we are not getting bike funds anymore. I don't know why they haven't told you.
Okay.
I don't.
They may have told me, I just didn't remember. So $1,000 from the ARCA funds, it's community development. Would it be all right to do that? Yeah, it goes directly back into the community. How many kids did you say would help?
257.
That's a good investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys, you guys will hear from me in a later day.
If you leave that with my staff.
You'll hear from me.
So we'll, we'll have to put that on the agenda for approval at the next meeting.
Good evening. Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I'm just up here this evening to invite everyone to the Beachside Neighborhood Watch Meeting, which will happen tomorrow at Our Lady of Lords in their community room. The meeting starts at 6:30. If you want the pizza, get there a little bit earlier. Our guest for the evening is Sheriff Chip Wood. And this is not just for beachside residents. We welcome anybody who would like to attend. So we hope to see you 6:30 at Our Lady of Lords Community Room. Thank you.
I was going to announce ours too. You can come to ours. Go ahead on Monday night.
Okay. Second Monday of every month, Midtown Neighborhood Group meets. We've had some excellent presenters come to us virtually every, every week. So it's another way to spend, you know, make good use of your time. Um, both meetings include presentations from our police captains and from our code officers. So if you have any questions about law enforcement or code, it's a great time to come in and talk to folks one-on-one.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Steve Miller. And before Mr. Miller comes up, do you guys want these now, or do you want me to put them in the mailbox?
Yes.
Okay.
Just enough for the commission and the mayor.
Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street, beautiful Daytona Beach, Florida. It is indeed a pleasure to become before the leadership of the honorable city of Daytona Beach. Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure. Derek Vieja, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, my dear friend. I just wanted to invite you guys to our Neighborhood Watch Meeting, which will be held, uh, on Monday, which is the second Monday of each month. We have the Honorable Mayor of the beautiful city, not mayor. We would love to have you, sir. We have the Police Chief coming this particular, uh, Monday. He's going to talk about, um, open, open carry. A lot of folks realize that the legislators allow people to have a open carry. He's going to talk about the do's and don'ts, and we're looking forward to actually having you guys there. And I'm looking forward to being at the Neighborhood Watch, Beachside, and we appreciate it. And, uh, I hear that we have a new city, um, um, meeting at, um, Zone 5. They tell me they had a nice meal there at the last meeting. I'm looking forward to coming to the next meeting. Um, Ms. Henry, uh, because I love to eat as well. But we want to invite you guys to come to our Neighborhood Watch. The, uh, the city, uh, this Police Chief will be there at this particular meeting. Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys, and I'm convinced this is the most awesome city in the entire state of Florida. And, uh, thank you guys for what you guys do for, for everybody here in the city of Daytona Beach. Thank you.
Great meeting. Good night, Daytona Beach.